Hello, my name is Jenna P. Gore. I'm the host of the Faces of Grand Prairie Podcast. And today, my guest is Councilman Tony Shotwell. And Tony Shotwell is actually in my district, District Five. He was elected to his position in 2024. And I sit down with him today to talk about all kinds of local civics, conversations and things that are going on in the city of Grand Prairie. And we are looking for sponsors for the podcast. If you are a business or a person who would be interested in supporting what I'm trying to do on this podcast, which is to interview very interesting people from all around our city, and highlight people and businesses and those people that are serving our community, living in our community, working in our community, and highlighting them on this podcast. I would love to talk to you further about sponsoring an episode. It costs about $25 to rent a space to interview people, and it costs about $25 per hour to have everything edited and put together for the podcast. So we would love to offer our business partners out there, or just anyone that would like to have a shout out on the podcast, a $50, sponsor the podcast, $50 for one hour, and you will get a one-minute advertisement for your business. It will go on to the episode and it will stay on the episode forever. So as many times as people listen to it, that's how many people you're gonna reach. And they're all gonna be local Grand Prairie citizens and people that are interested in our community and that live in our community also. So today, our podcast is sponsored by me. My name is Jenna P. Gore. I am a Realtor here in Grand Prairie. I've had my real estate license since 2014. And I service several cities, not just Grand Prairie, but lots of places in Dallas-Fort Worth. And I specialize in helping adult children of aging parents downsize and sell their homes when it gets to the point when it's time to sell those homes. I specialize in that, though I can help buyers and sellers of all types find and purchase and sell real estate. And also from Generosity Estate Sales, which is my estate sale company. It is spelled J-E-N-N-A-R-O-C-I-T-Y. And we help all those people that I was talking to you about before. We help them all downsize their stuff as well. So if you have a house full of items that you need to figure out a place for, that would be what you hire us for. So these are just two examples of the type of advertising that we can do for you on this show. And we will specialize it to your advertising specifications. So tell us about our business, tell us who you are, and I will put a shout out on the show for you. And it will go right at the beginning, so everybody can hear all about your wonderful business or person, opportunity, anything that you'd like to tell us about. And we appreciate so much you supporting what I'm trying to do with this local community podcast. Without further ado, here is Councilman Shotwell and I's conversation.
Hi, Mr. Shotwell.
Hi Jenna.
How are you?
I'm tired.
Tired?
But okay.
Good.
I'm here.
What did you just say that made me laugh? You said, "It's good to be seen."
Good to be seen and not viewed at my age.
I love that. That's awesome. So is this your first time recording?
Yes ma'am.
In this podcast? What do you think?
I like it.
It's pretty cool. The very first time I ever used this building, I interviewed Mayor Jensen. And it was upstairs and the big, there's a huge like studio. And it's designed really more for like bands and people that are doing that kind of thing. Yeah, it was good. It was good. It's a good place. So, well, good. I'm so glad you came to talk to me. You are my city councilman.
Yes ma'am.
So which district are you in?
Five.
District Five. And when did you get elected?
This time?
Mm-hmm.
2024.
So just last year?
Just last May.
So you, tell us a little bit more about your history, like when it comes to being in the city council. You can go back as far as you want, really, but like, you have a long history.
Well, it's what you get when you're old. It all started really with the 1990 bond election. There was, there was a bond election to, one of the things on the bond election was to bring little two-inch water lines in Burbank Gardens where I live, from out in the alleyways out to the streets and make them bigger, so we'd get more volume of water and put the water meters out in the street where it's easier for the meter readers back then. And everybody, of course, we were all for it. It was a great idea. But the mayor that was the mayor at that time, his idea was that all of us would need to go hire private plumbers to hook into the water system again, that we already had water running.
Oh.
And I don't know, somehow, I guess, you know, I live in a predominantly Hispanic neighborhood. And I guess somehow, they figured I had the best English, so I got to be the, be the person that goes down and talks for us. And we, we won that battle. And the...
So did you just go down to like the city council meeting?
Down to the city council meeting when they were talking about the bond election and got Terry Jackson to support us. And we were pretty, pretty, going pretty good then, because the mayor kinda, kinda looked bad. Really, really looked bad.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like a great decision.
And then a couple of years later, a guy named Miles Diamond was running for city council against the incumbent. And he came by and asked me to support him. And I said, "Sure," you know, even the incumbent guy, he didn't want us, he wanted us to pay to hook up the water lines. So I said, "Sure, I'll help you." And after he won, he appointed me as planning his zoning commission. And about three and a half years later, he started dating the economic development director. And when they decided to get married, one of them had to leave. And she was making a hundred grand a year and he was making $25 a month. So they, they had this decision that they had to make. And he resigned from the council. And back then, we were, there was two-year terms. So what they would do is just appoint somebody to fill in until the next election. And I got appointed to take his place until, from August until May, the next, next May election. And we decided to run and against two candidates and got by and won it and...
So how long were you councilman before?
From 1995 till 2018.
That's a long time. I did not realize it was that long.
Yeah, it was 23 years.
Wow. So what made you wanna just stop?
Ah, my health. I had a, I had, well, I had neck surgery and I had lower back surgery. And the guy that did the lower back surgery the first time, we've decided that he got his medical degree at Dollar Tree. Because he screwed that up really bad. And I had to have a revision surgery where they took out all hardware and everything. And that was about the time the election was gonna crank up. And I decided that I could have probably ran and had a pretty good chance, but I wouldn't have been able to go out and knock on doors and talk to people. And contrary to what most people say, I kinda enjoy that.
You're the only one, I can say, that came to my door. I think that people in this, in political environment think that it's not important to do that anymore. And it's 100% important to do that.
Oh, absolutely. I do, if, the way I, this district is so big geographically. You know, it's got the, they, they all have approximately the same number of people. But it's so big geographically, it's hard to do. So the way I tried to do it is I had a, I had a very good extra set of helpers with my wife and a lady named Karen Cox. They're, they're pretty energetic and they got out and probably knocked on eight, nine hundred doors.
Wow.
And then I would be where they weren't. And then they would be where I was. So we tried to make sure that the target voters we were going after got visited twice if possible. And if nobody was home, we'd leave something to tell them. And I believe, first thing, I don't know what the day-to-day problems are way over in Continental Estates.
Right.
When I live over in Burbank Gardens, so...
How big is your, how big is your district?
It's basically from, I guess, Gramley by the cemetery to 30.
Okay.
And from Dallas to 161.
That is huge. Wow.
Yeah, geographically, it's pretty big. There's not a lot of, I guess, apartments. I was gonna say multifamily, but there's not a lot of apartments in the district. So to get to that same number of people, you gotta have a lot more houses.
Right, that's true. That's true. So you took a break for a little bit. Now, did you grow up in Grand Prairie?
No, no, I, I was born in Wichita Falls and got into the Metroplex by way of Gainesville. And I guess I moved down in the Metroplex when I was 20.
Okay.
21, somewhere along in there. When I first moved down here, I lived in a 1965 Buick Wildcat for a while.
Really? Wow.
Yeah. I'd been married and had a son. And we split up and she kept my son, so I had to, I had to work. You know, I got, I got commitments.
Sure.
So I moved down here, stayed at Lake Lewisville. That's where I, at, at the park there along 35. And they let you sleep all night there. And for about four months, lived in that car until I got enough money to get a boarding house over in East Dallas.
Oh my goodness. So what, what decade was that in?
Ah, that would have been in the mid 70s.
The 70s. So what, what brought you to Grand Prairie?
Well, that same wife got married to her again. It worked out so well the first time. And we moved to Irving. And then when that didn't work, the, this time the kids, my son stayed with me. Now, that happens a lot nowadays, the kids stay with the father. But back in 1976, 77, that was unusual.
That's very, that's very true.
So we, we moved, got another apartment in Irving. But, you know, I'm in my twenties and I got married again. And we moved out into a trailer park. So I, I really loved when people get after trailers. And we lived in, in there, but we were in Irving, but we were in the Grand Prairie School District.
Oh, I know exactly. It still exists.
Yes, yes. There's a little piece of Bear Creek.
What, Bear Creek, that's right. What, it's off of...
Back then, it was called County Line Road. Now, now it's Valley View.
It's so interesting. We talked about this, but Grand Prairie goes up so north and then it goes down so far south. And I don't know if people realize how many school districts that we actually are a part of in Grand Prairie.
Well, there's part of Grand Prairie that's in Irving School District too.
Really?
I believe so.
Oh my goodness. And Arlington, and Mansfield, and Cedar, no Dallas. It's, it's so, there's so many. So, so you were living up there and then you got down to Grand Prairie?
Well, when I was a kid, as I said, when we left Wichita Falls, we moved to Gainesville, the year that I was starting high school. And well, for me, that didn't work out so well. You know, that's tough on a 13-year-old kid, lose all your friends and stuff. And I never graduated from high school. I had better things to do than to go to school. And so my son was just fixing to start middle school at Adams. I was not gonna make that same mistake. So the only places we looked for a house was in Adams School Zone.
Oh, gotcha.
And then we moved to, we found that house over there. I bought it from my next-door neighbor's daughter. And so my next-door neighbor knew all about the house. And they were the best neighbors in the world. And we, we bought that house and I have been in that house since 1988.
Oh wow. Grand Prairie's a good place. I grew up here too. I, I mean, I was born in 1980, but my parents graduated from high school, Grand Prairie High School, in 1971 and 72. So they've been here, I've been here. It's grown a lot, changed a lot.
That means I'm the same age as your parents.
Hey, that's okay. It just means you're wise. But it has changed a lot. Did it change? I mean, even since you left council, it's changed a lot.
Yeah, yeah, like this, you know, we, we bought the land where this is and it was just beginning when I got up council.
Oh wow, that's right. Cause we had the summit then, but nothing else. Did y'all plan for this when you were on council?
Yes.
You did?
Yes. It was, this opened. I was still on council. My name's on the plaque out there. But the waters didn't open. It opened later.
Oh, I see. Okay. So who is the, really the instigator in this whole development? Like, where did that come about?
Well, buying the land was, was a little controversial at the time. Dr. Bob Smith owned the property. It was all cotton field. And they told us we could buy it. Jim Swafford knew them. And Charlie didn't, the mayor at the time, he didn't, it wasn't at the top of his priority list. But we, Dick Frigo really pushed it. And we, we bought it. I was in favor of it. I thought, you know, it was a reasonable price. I wasn't in the, and still am not, in the city being a, owning a lot of real estate. We're not in the real estate business.
Sure, sure.
But the caveat to it was, we would do something that was park-related. Only buy it for parkland. And then we started, Tom Hart really had, and give Tom Cox credit. They came up with this idea. And it just, everybody kept adding on to it and it got bigger and bigger.
Was it, was it the original intent to also put like a, like a conference center and stuff in there?
Yes, well, the conference, the Hotel and Conference Center was kind of the, gonna be the catalyst to it.
Oh, really?
We were gonna do this to try to bring that. And we had to, we were talking at Loot Nine Barbecue way back then. And of course, they didn't work out, but they were, they were gonna be our first tenant up here.
Oh wow.
We were always looking at that. Now, how it all worked out with the hotel and the conference center being together, that's, that's just the way it worked out. But that was the plan. That was always the plan.
So did y'all, did y'all have a lot of, you know, one of the biggest controversial things, in my opinion, growing up here, is going from a small, big town to a big town. I've always seen us as a big town. That just was kind, the fact that we were like so in the middle of DFW, like right in between it, it always blew my mind that we weren't bigger faster. But I know that that was a lot of things, we, we got a lot of pushback on that. And for good reason. I mean, there's pros and cons to both sides. But did you experience that?
Well, yeah, in the very first election I had, it was, we made the choice was, were we gonna continue to be a bedroom community? And were we glint heights or were we gonna grow and flourish? And so it's, it's always been a little bit of kickback. I think we've done a...
You can move this up if it's...
Okay. I think we've done a, that's good.
Okay.
I think we've done a really good job at keeping the small-town feel. I think some of the people way down south don't get that.
True.
But they will one day because the community, community stuff is gonna come down that way. And once, once they get it, they'll understand that the small, we still, especially over where you and I live, because we still have the old, the old stuff.
Sure.
You know?
It's definitely different, like, cause I grew up, well, I grew up on what was the South Side of town at the time, which was, which was where the Target and everything is now. Of course, whenever I moved over there, it was horses. And then it just kind of grew from there. And, but that was what was south in my youth. And so, but I moved north, I moved to the North Side in 2010 and I lived off of Egyptian, which I love that neighborhood. So I've always been kind of attracted to the, to the historical side. But it's a very different feel when you go down to the other side. From what I understand, aren't y'all putting a second, like hub, some type of hub down there?
Yeah, there's gonna be a, kind of a mini city hall where you can go in and pay your water bill or make a complaint. You know, it's, it won't be as big or anything, but it'll be, there'll be key, like library kiosk like there are here. And, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe a little police presence.
Down there? That's a good idea.
Because you, you know, like a substation-type presence. But it'll all, if I have anything to do with it, it'll all be in one building.
Okay.
I think the rec center up in my neighborhood shows that that can work. And that way, you save taxpayers' money by having one foundation, one air conditioning system. You don't have three different this and that's all over.
So about that, so I'm sorry, I keep pulling on you.
Yeah, I wanna get out of your way. There we go.
There we go. So talk about that a little bit. So Tony Shotwell, the Tony, Tony Shotwell, Tony Shotwell Recreation Center. You said it works. Is there like city services that are in that building also?
Well, no, but when it started, we had the, a police storefront.
Oh, okay.
Along, along with the library and the rec, and the rec center.
I got you. I got you. It's interesting how all that still works so well.
Yeah, and back then, you know, the, the argument was, well, you can't have Parks and Recreation Department and the library and the police all in the same place. We all have our little fathoms that we have to, and Tom Cox and I sat the, the library director at the time. And the police chief was great with it. He was fine. And then the rec center, we just sat down and said, you know, you're gonna coexist.
You, and you also...
It's gonna happen. You're gonna do it.
You had Tom Hart and you had Rick Harold too, didn't you?
Yeah, we had Rick Harold.
I interviewed him. He's, oh my gosh, he is such an interest, he was such an interesting man.
Rick was one of the good ones.
He was, well, he was so innovative in the way that he did things. And I'm so glad I got to record his, his story about how he became, like, how do you get to be where you get to do stuff like this in a city? And first of all, people trusted him a lot. But I do think that it speaks to the city itself about how innovative we allow people to be. Because him and Tom Hart worked really, really well together. But Rick was just such an interesting guy. I mean, you can speak to that probably more than I can. But, you know, you got to work with him in a different way than I did.
Rick's, Rick never let, never let anything get in the way of his imagination.
Yes.
He thought if he could imagine it, it could happen.
And for those that don't know who Rick is, he was the director of the Parks and Rec for how many years?
Probably 15.
Something like that.
He came over from Ulyss. Tom Hart, when we hired him from, he was the city manager in Ulyss. And we hired him when we, when Gary Gwynn left. And the Parks guy that we had went to Arizona. And Tom brought Rick over from Ulyss. But then again, Tom brought Tom Cox over from Ulyss. He brought the city secretary over from Ulyss. And we were kind of laughing and we might as well change our name to Ulyss East. But all of them worked out real well.
That's, that's so, that, what a special guy, because that's not how everybody sees that position. But he did.
Yeah.
And you also got to work with Ruthie. And so how was that?
Well, Ruthie actually lived four houses down and across the alley from me.
Okay.
And so her and Vernon were, you know, they're the best people that there ever was. And we had a, we had a little spat at one time about their property behind them going commercial. And some of the neighbors, we were a little worried about what it could become. But they told us what they were gonna do. And it's Ruthie and Vernon, if they told you that's what they're gonna do, they're not gonna do something different.
So I'm curious.
After we, after we learned that, we were all okay with it.
Right. Well, so was she, was she on the council when you were there? Okay, the whole time or?
Yes.
The whole time, okay. Well, I would just be curious what it was like to have Ruthie as a citizen and not, like, if, if I, if she were in my district, like what she would have been like as a citizen.
Oh, I'm sure she would have been, I'm sure she would have been pretty rough. Yeah, she, she was on council when I got there. Now, she had gotten back on council after losing the mayor election. And that was two years before, two or three years before I started.
Okay.
So then she was on there all the time until she passed.
Okay. And what was she, was she at-large?
Yeah.
Okay, she was at-large.
Yeah, she was District Five and then she ran for mayor. And after she lost that by 69 votes, she ran for at-large.
Are you telling me that local elections are very close?
Some of them are. John Lopez beat Dick Frigo by eight votes.
That's, and people think that their, their vote does not matter.
Yeah, it certainly does.
It certainly does.
Yeah, that, that one really shows you, eight votes.
So as a city council, I mean, you, you've done this for a long time, so you have experience. What kind of advice would you give to citizens about being involved in like, what goes on in the city?
Well, the first thing I would do if I was moving to a town and one day my wife and I want to either have a, a second house or maybe a house down somewhere on the Texas Gulf Coast. But if I was moving to a new town and I wanted to get civically involved, I would first start going to a few city council meetings, just to sit there and listen and look. Personally, I can tell more about people by looking at their interaction with other people than I can by listening to what they say sometimes.
I'm so glad you said that. Because first of all, not enough people attend the, the meetings. And I attend, so I'm a part of my daughter's school. We have our own school board meetings. So I get to miss, I have to miss a lot. I have to pick which meetings I'm gonna be going to. But I always tell people, not enough people attend meetings. And there is very important to see faces. People think that when you go to a meeting, that you have to show up to talk. You can just show up to listen. And the fact that you do that is very important. And I'm glad you just said that because you, as a, as an elected official, seeing people in the audience, number one, shows you that people care.
Yes.
And number two, just like what you said, body language speaks volumes.
Absolutely.
Tell me more about that.
Well, if I was starting, I would be able to see how the interaction was first between the people there, the management and the other people that are working for the city. Plus, you know, my neighbors. If I hear somebody getting up or even just hearing them talking about something that affects me, I could go over and introduce myself. And if I'm new to a city, that's how you get to know people. Go to church with them. You gotta, you, you just gotta, and if you wanna be interested in city government, that's a way to do it. Of course, the other ways are always, put your name up for a board or commission.
Why do you think it's important for people to be a part of that process, like locally?
That's, well, locally, first thing, locally is the most important to me, is the most important government there is. I got, my toilet needs to flush.
Right.
I want the fireman to come if my house is on fire. I want my trash picked up.
Right.
All of these other state, national, all that stuff, that's important too in its own way. But the quality of my life depends on my local, what's going on in my city. You can definitely tell that if you go to cities that aren't as well-off as we are.
That's right.
Not dollar-wise, but people-wise.
Right. I can't understand why people are not as engaged with local city stuff. I just don't, I don't get it.
Well, I'll tell you part of why, what, what I think is why and why I'm kind of glad that's the case. Local elections are nonpartisan in Texas. And so people don't get riled up about, oh, my party this, my party that. But party, party politics doesn't pick up my trash.
That's, that's very right. Junior said almost exactly the same thing that you just, he was here.
So that's one reason why they, it's not quite the involvement. And you don't get bombarded with stuff. But by God, if somebody's trash does get picked up or if their water's not running, then the city government's the most important thing they got.
Or there's a pothole in front of their driveway that they can't get, yes.
Can't get around that. Then it's, then it's very important and they're down there grapping and hollering. And I think that's a pretty good time to catch somebody too.
Sure.
Cause if I have people emailing me or texting me or calling me about a problem they've got, I'll ask them, you got a solution for me? And I'll try to get, we'll, we'll see if your solution will work. And then, okay, you wanna help me take care of this one? There's a pothole right down the street from you. Let's see if we can get together and make your solution work for that pothole too. And try to, try to catch them right there. And you lose a lot, but you catch a few every now and then. And that's where I get most of my board and commission appointees.
What a great idea. That is such a great idea. What a great idea. That is such a great idea.
My lady that's on the planning commission, one day I was running for election, knocking on doors, and she had some gripes, and, okay, uh, what are we, what are we gonna do about it? Said, first thing, I gotta get elected. And then the second thing is, okay, what do you want? How do you wanna handle that situation? And I realized she was sharp as a tack.
Did you, uh, wha- what percentage of people do you think even know that we have boards and commissions? And that they can be appointed to them?
Excellent question.
Do you think it could be better?
You need to be on the radio. I'd go with ten percent.
I probably would too.
Really poor number.
Yeah. It's hard, because like, well, and what you do is you go after people that, you hear people tell you that there's a need, and then you're like, you know what, you're in a position where you could actually do something about it, and that's empowering.
Well.
Which is great.
Uh, you know, animals, uh, dog, dogs have my heart, we'll start with that. And dogs running loose, people holler about that. And those are the folks, that's where I grab, okay, you, you, I can tell the way you're talking about these little dogs, not these dogs running loose and pooing in my yard.
Right.
But these dogs are running loose and they might get ran over.
Right.
That's the person I'll grab and say, hey, why don't you think about the animal shelter board?
That's, that's such a perceptive way of looking at human beings, because not everybody sees them that way. But you're, you're, what you, what you, you're doing is you're seeing an opportunity. You're, an opportunity to empower someone, to make a change for themselves, and to be in position of authority to where they can actually help with things. And that's sometimes the best teaching and the best learning that you can do.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah, is, especially when it comes to government, because once you see the restrictions, limitations, it changes how you see things.
And I think that those are the folks that, uh, we should nurture to come up and take, you know, replace me, replace Junior, you know, they, that's where the next bunch of, that way they're, they would get on the city council or whatever with their feet running. They won't be a complete novice and go, oh, this is city hall, I've never been here.
Right. It's very true. And that attitude of like bringing up the next generation, bringing up the next group, Ruthie had that.
Yes, absolutely.
And she, she was very good.
She nurtured me a lot.
Did she really?
Absolutely.
I've heard that so many times.
Her, her and, uh, former mayor Weldon Parkill.
That's before my time. When was that?
Oh, Lord, he was mayor back when God was a small baby. In the sixties. Parkill Park is named after him.
Oh, okay.
But he lived on, uh, what's the name of that street? Platter. He lived on Platter in Pecan Acres.
Oh, okay, uh-huh.
And, uh, he went to school, he graduated from Gainesville High School with my daddy.
Small world.
So, uh, when I first got onto this, uh, I walked by his house, knocked on the door, and he grabbed me and said, get your butt in here. And sat me down and, and told me a lot of good things, and whenever I'd have a problem or a question, Weldon Parkill was the guy that had the answers.
Oh, wow. So he wasn't even, he's been, he'd been long since been mayor.
He'd been mayor, yeah.
But he was giving you, see, that's what we need. We, we need those mentors, like, that's, that's, that's my goal, is I wanna see young people be engaged in their local, and I think they wanna be.
I think a lot of them do.
I do.
I think the, uh, boy, I might get myself in trouble with this one. I think there is a, possibly a generational miss.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I, I feel that the ones that are high school age now, I'm feeling a lot more from them.
Yes.
Want to do that, and I think there was a miss, maybe the generation my son was in. And, uh, I feel it's, it's a lot more now.
Yeah, I think that, um, it's interesting, because when we feel like government is running really well, it's when people lose interest the most. And when we feel like it's kind of going off the rails, that's when we get engaged again.
Well, yeah, and I'll pat myself on the back. I think that, I think in the late nineties through, through the two, early two thousands, Grand Prairie was, uh, running like a well-oiled sewing machine.
I didn't notice anything, so that shows you right there.
It was, we were, we were growing, we were managing the growth, and, um, and I think, I think it ran really well.
Yeah. And when, when did Mayor Jensen get elected?
Oh, let's see, I started in ninety-five, Jim Bledsoe was on for four years, and then Ron got elected to replace Jim as a single-member district. And I do not recall exactly what year Charles England retired from being mayor.
Well, I always think it's not that long, but I think it's been longer than I think.
It was after two thousand and six, two thousand and ten-ish.
That sounds about right.
Somewhere along in there.
It was a huge shift for the direction of the city when he became mayor.
Yeah, it took a while. Now Charlie did, Charlie was a fantastic mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, leaps and bounds, Charlie was mayor, and he was a great cheerleader for Grand Prairie. Ron's different.
Yeah.
He's a great cheerleader for Grand Prairie, and we've grown by leaps and bounds, but it's just different.
It is, it's just different.
Charlie, Charlie was a little more, uh, territorial. Yeah, we were gonna grow, but don't you try to step on us.
Right.
And, and Ron's more, let's work together-ish.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it's, uh, well, it's definitely different than whenever I was a kid. I remember when we got Chili's and movies twelve, and we thought we were just in high cotton. We were just so excited to even have a chain restaurant then.
And we had to change the liquor by the drink rules.
Yes.
To get, to get Chili's in.
Well, and I remember, I guess Chili's probably came when I, it was like ninety-five, ninety-six, cuz I remember I just turned old enough to be able to host there.
It was around ninety-seven, ninety-eight, yeah.
Yep, and then Roadhouse got built, and I became a server there, and it was February ninety-eight, cuz I, I turned eighteen, I could serve alcohol. But we, we were in a membership at that point, cuz of where that was located.
Yep.
And, um, that didn't last very long, but it was there in the beginning, which is so crazy to think about. Cuz even when we opened, people were still smoking inside. I remember that was a huge deal when they were gonna make everybody not smoke. I bet you had a lot of.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you remember the Red R that had two different places of smoking and non-smoking?
Yes, we, I loved it whenever we would say, would you like, uh, no smoking, smoking or first available? And the first available table was literally a booth between the smoking and the non-smoking. I'm like, that doesn't do anything. But it was just, but I remember I, everybody at the time that was in the hospitality industry was like, if you do that, people aren't gonna come and, and they're not gonna do any, they're not gonna come in anymore. And of course, now, it's, it's unfathomable to think.
That you, that they were doing it.
Yeah, I know, when I go into Russia, I'm like, I can't even imagine, like, it's so gross, but, yeah, it was crazy. That was the big thing at the time.
Oh, yeah, Dallas did it before we did.
Yes, yes.
We piggybacked off of that a little. Dallas did it, you couldn't do it in bars.
Yeah.
Grand Prairie didn't have any bars at the time. Yeah, and, uh, we, we let them keep smoking, so we didn't catch that plaque.
Yeah, there was like, there was some grandfather stuff in there. I, I just, I was in the.
They're still grandfathered.
Really?
Yeah, there's, uh, I remember we did a, uh, a inventory of them. There's like four.
But, oh, wow.
Still in the grandfather deal. As long as they continue to operate, they, they always will be.
Oh, my goodness, that's crazy. I just, that was the big thing at the time, whenever I was in the hospitality industry, was the smoking and the drinking. And because we were right there on the current, Tarrant County line, we had different rules than like Don Pablo's, that was open, cuz it opened before Roadhouse did, I think. Um, and so, uh, servers would talk, we were like, oh, we gotta do this, you gotta do that, you know, and the Oasis, of course.
Yeah, it was membership.
It was membership. It, that, it's just, it's crazy when you think about how much we've changed, you know? Um, but so, like, what are some of the big, well, I guess probably one of the biggest things now would be apartments and bringing in like multifamily homes.
That's, that's controversial. All the apartment zoning was in place way, way back, and this highway, one sixty-one, uh, I'll credit Charlie for that, you know, he, we went through a lawsuit, and we were actually being sued by a sitting city council member to try to not get one sixty-one built where it was.
I didn't even know that they could do that.
And one of the city council mem, one of the plaintiffs in the lawsuit against it was Harry Engler, who was on the city council.
Interesting.
And, uh, you know, getting this highway built, it looked like Bosnia out here when they were building it.
Yes.
It's all busted up, but getting this highway built has opened up so much, and the zoning for a lot of these apartments was already in place. And I know it's controversial, but and I can see, you know, Irving, bless her, God bless her souls, uh, is probably seventy percent apartments.
It is.
And that's tough, that's tough on your ad valorem taxes, cuz you, and your services, city services seem to, there seems to be more city services needed in a multifamily than in a single family.
Which is so interesting, because like, the reason it's like that is because it's such a huge commuter city. Like even in like Los Colinas, which is a part of the Irving, you know, it's just, it's so transient, like, and it's, but it's, it's flush with, with resources.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, people aren't, they're not there permanently.
Lot of cash there.
There is a lot of cash.
One of the reasons why we, I'm saying we, me and you, the per, the biggest thing me and you want, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what you want, but I know it's what I want too, we need a good grocery store.
Oh, yeah, on the north side for sure.
Absolutely. Do you know why we don't have one?
No, but please tell people, because that is a very controversial thing too.
Density.
When you say density, what do you mean?
We don't have enough rooftops, bodies. You pick a, well, we don't, the people that do these things drop a dot where they wanna build and draw a three mile and a five mile circle around it, and count the people and the dollars. Now, that's changing a little because of mobility now. Now they're looking more at mobility of where you can get to there easily.
Gotcha.
A good four-lane road or something.
Right.
But where we're at, you count the competition that's around, there's not, we don't have enough rooftops and disposable dollars. If we had one or two of these larger apartment complexes with four, six hundred units, where a thousand or twelve hundred people, that would help us a whole lot.
Now, are you talking about any grocery store or a specific ones? Like, I mean, we all know that we want an HEB in Grand Prairie, that's obvious.
If an HEB ever came, it wouldn't come where we live.
Well, no, it would be, yeah, definitely not.
I'm, I'm saying any of the major players. Uh, we're pushing really hard to get something in our area, and Georgia's doing the same thing, because you go up in Nottingham and up in there. They've got the same problem.
Yep.
I hate to say it, but I buy my groceries and spend my sales tax dollars in Irving.
Yeah, cuz it's, you can go up.
Cuz I go straight up MacArthur, a pretty four-lane road, and there's a Kroger. That's the mobility thing, a pretty one straight shot four-lane road. If that was a two-lane road with a thousand potholes in it, I'd probably go to Albertson's, even though it's farther away.
And more expensive, or whatever is more, you know.
But, but it's, I can get there, that's the mobility part. I can get there easy, it's close to my house. And it burns my butt every time I do it, but I have, I do it.
Yeah.
But we are actually looking at somebody, trying to bring somebody in that's, may not be one of the major players over in our area. Over where Georgia is, it may be a major player, because they've got a little more density. Because there's a lot of apartments along three sixty.
Yep, there are.
And over where we're at, plus we're a predominantly Hispanic neighborhoods, there are a lot of good, major Hispanic themed grocery stores that I don't mind shopping at.
I go to, so I live off Beltline, I shop at that Fiesta all the time. There's another one, I can't remember the name of it, but it's right across from Ace Hardware. Oh, yeah, I mean, I go there, I, I shop at Aldi. Um, and even, there's, there's times that like Dollar General and Family, Family Dollar are good for certain things.
Yep.
Um, but we, we are so heavy on those, and those are more dollars per item, really, when it comes to how much you get for everything.
And it's not as nutritious.
It's not as nutritious, you don't get the fruits and vegetables and all those things.
So we're, we're trying, we're looking. There's, the other problem we have in District Five is we got a lot of houses and not a whole heck of a lot of open space.
That's very true. We are very, um, developed already.
Built out, yeah. And the, uh, the open space that is there, what we're hoping for is the mobility thing.
Right.
We've got a couple of places that we're pushing, we're knocking on doors, uh, we got a, Grand Prairie has a new economic development director, just came on board. Tony Ramirez.
Okay.
Can't forget his first name, but sometimes I have to remember his last name.
Sounds like I should interview him.
His background is in site selection.
Oh.
For major corporations. So he can look at a site we've got, and he's pretty good saying, yeah, I could sell that site to somebody or not. So we've got him looking at some, some spaces that are open. And, uh, he's got some ideas that we might be able to pull off something in the future, you know, as nothing's gonna happen by the end of this year.
I'm glad that you brought that up, because that, that leads me to think about a question that I've never asked anybody, but I'm glad that you brought that up. So when you live in an, an older part of, every city has the older, you know, development, that was at one time the big place, and now it's, you know, not, or people have owned a building for forever and ever and ever. Um, so one of the things that I'm sure is a challenge is, you have this building, like, we just knocked down a big, a b, a building, what, uh, the trading company, we just, that building just got taken down, the one that was the trading post.
Oh, yeah, it used to be a Bonanza way back in.
Yes, so you have these buildings that then become dilapidated, or they become empty or vacant. Well, they're not owned by the city. They're owned by, they're privately owned, but I'm sure that that's a struggle, is like trying to get them, if they're an eyesore, trying to get them revitalized, trying to get people in. Um, we have a, you know, space on Main Street that's been empty forever, and it's like prime real estate. We don't even have to go into it, cuz it's like, that's, again, it's, it's, being a Realtor, I'm all about pro, property ownership and property rights. But at the same time, it's like, but you have to balance that with responsibility of being in a community. And so how do y'all, how do you navigate that?
Well, in the time that I wasn't on the council, they, the city bought up a lot of property. And it's all still vacant. Well, not all, uh, the, the best one they bought was Cavalry. That's, there's a plan for that, which is a good plan, which brings some density. Uh, but they bought up a lot of other property. They bought up, like you said, there's some building space in downtown that the city bought, in my humble opinion, for no reasonable purpose. I'm a believer in the market will tell us what's gonna happen. I always hear, sometimes I hear this word, control, well, we'd like to control what's gonna happen. Well, in my humble opinion, SBS, the market's gonna control what's gonna happen. The city may be able to zone it where it would be something, there's, but the market's gonna control what fits in that zoning. If I am a guy that doesn't like, and I'm not one, but if I, if I were a guy that didn't like tattoo parlors, I couldn't in good conscience, zone something where you can't put a tattoo parlor anywhere in this city. The market's gonna do that for me. Somebody, somebody will, there'll be enough interest in buying something, and that's for any kind of business. This, the way that you do something, if you, somebody's got old dilapidated buildings, you go beat on the property owner. If it's out of code, you start writing tickets for it being out of code. Eventually you'll get their, you know, you, you'll get their attention.
Right.
A lot of those are out of state investors or REITs that, REITs are the worst ones trying to get, get them to bring property up to code.
What's REITs?
Uh, real estate investment trusts.
Oh, yes.
They're hard to, hard. They're hard to, hard to deal with, but, uh, because you, nobody, nobody owns it, everybody owns it, but nobody.
Right, you can't ever find whoever's, yeah, exactly.
And. But otherwise you, you get after the property owner and eventually you'll get their attention and you'll tell, go tell them, hey, man, you, you don't wanna keep us to keep. Writing you tickets, if you're not gonna fix this up, put it on the market. Sell it to somebody that had, might have a use for it or plan for it. A good example of that is the old, uh. Nursing home on Third. Across from Bowie Elementary School. Uh, that's gonna be ten. Affordable housing units.
Really?
Yeah, they're already being developed.
Oh, how interesting.
Uh, you know, I use affordable, not three hundred thousand dollars is not affordable to me, but that's affordable nowadays. So affordable is in air quotes.
But they'll be able to be purchased.
Therefore purchased, yeah, and we're working with the county and another group to, uh. Maybe be able to help with down payments, uh, help with interest rates, you know, be, do some buy downs. So we're gonna try to make them even more affordable than that is, but.
So does the city own those too?
Uh, the city. Has four lots. The county is working three of them and another group's working three of them.
That's interesting.
And we're looking, we're looking for, uh, more places to be able to do that. County Commissioner Elba Garcia is a big fan of this. And we believe that we can get Tarrant County to work with us on doing some of the, some of it too. So, we're hoping to be able to find other places where we can do things like that.
And is it just the city's kinda stepping in because other investors aren't?
Uh, other investors, right now, affordable housing is not on the top of their list.
You're kidding.
I guess, uh, you're a Realtor, you know, people are, where are they getting the money to buy these houses? I don't know, but they're doing it.
Well, what Arlington has that, that Grand Prairie does not have is condos and a lot of townhomes. And a lot of smaller homes. And so there's a lot of that. Like right now, um, I'm helping a client buy a townhome and I've never seen so many on the market as I've seen in the last, which is great because. Two years ago, that was not the case. Uh, it was like, okay, we're gonna go look at this condo and there's already twenty offers on it and it's already fifty thousand dollars over asking price. But at least now that's not the case, but now we have a different set of, you know, issues, which is insurance premiums and, you know, interest rates and all that stuff. But I, I, I've, I've talked about this for a while. It's, we have in, in the city of Grand Prairie. We have Mountain Creek Townhomes. We have the townhomes over on the north side, uh, that used to be by a golf course. I don't think it's a golf course anymore, um, like Fairway.
Over there, yeah, it's an industrial complex now.
Yes, and then we have some over there off Warrior Trail. But for the most part, we don't, we don't have a whole lot of condo and townhome options. Not for the size of city that we are. Most all of ours are single family.
Yeah, for the size of our city, we don't, uh, there, there's more coming in on one sixty one.
Right.
Over here, but there's, and of course the ones on, uh, Buy's Hardware.
Oh, yes, the one over by, you're right.
But there's just, you're right, there's not a lot of that and, uh. We're trying to, if somebody comes in now with a multifamily development. We're trying real hard to get them to do that over closer to the single family. To put a buffer between the multifamily and the single family with something like townhouses or. I hate this word they're using now, paired housing. You and I call that duplexes, but something like that, and that makes a little buffer between, so you don't have. Multifamily looking down in your backyard quite as often.
I don't think multifamily is bad. If there was some homeownership options, I think the biggest issue is that. You, there's just not options to own. And I've said this for a long time, you're like the tenth city councilman that I've said this, not that y'all have control over all that, but it's. You know, finding, we, we have a great school district in the city. That does a lot of career and technology. We have a lot of people that are going to work for Lockheed and making good money graduating from high school. When they get out of high school, they can't afford any of the ci, the places in the city. And it's like, but in Dallas and in Irving and some of these places in Arlington, they have those small condo options. Where at least they can start gaining equity as a homeowner. And so I think that, but right now I just, like when I saw Sarah Jane, the cottages on Sarah Jane, I was like, oh, what a great idea. And then I was like, nope, they're rentals. And then the cottages over off I twenty, nope, they're rentals. And it's like, so I don't know where the incentive has to come in for developers to be, to sell them again. But.
I guess the price point's not good enough for them.
Maybe not, maybe not. It'd be nice to start seeing that though, because I'm all about homeownership.
Well, I, I agree. And you know, our neighborhood, where we've got a lot of eight hundred square foot houses.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
A lot nowadays, I've noticed where in the northeast section now of my district now, you go from, uh. Beltline to the west is different, but Beltline to the east. The houses were built during the war probably, uh, people working at LTV. They're, either the folks are dying and the kids don't want it and they sell it. Or somebody just comes and buys the lot, but we're getting a lot of demos and what I, for, for. They're not McMansions, but for our neighborhood, they're McMansions.
Yes.
Because they're twenty-five, twenty-three hundred square feet, right next to in between two nine hundred square feet houses.
It's very unique planning.
It's interesting, but I'm all for infill. That's what will make the rest of it grow.
Sure.
And get better.
And there's a lot that are getting completely redone.
Yes.
Which they really should because.
Complete remodels and expansions.
Yes.
Just re- remodel a eight hundred square foot house and add five hundred square feet.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm all for that. The city has done some helping people that.
Yes.
Remodel and especially older folks, uh, to make it where their houses are more habitable.
Yes.
And you go into some, I've been into some that we've done that when I look up the ceiling sinking down, you know, and. We've been able to make it where it's safer and put in ramps for folks.
That was, that was the commission I was on, the housing commission. We, when we, cause we have so much grant money. Uh, not so, I mean, it's not like we're flush with it, but it's like you do get grant money, that's federal grant money.
Helps with that, absolutely, and that's free money.
Absolutely, and, and, um, I need to take advantage. Um, we have a program in the city about redoing your windows to energy efficient windows. And when I looked at it last, I think I looked at it not, I didn't do it until December, uh, it had run out for the year. But I need to go back and do it again.
And hopefully it got renewed because a lot of that grant money got lost.
Yeah.
But we, it's been replaced with other grant money. We're really hustling for grant money now.
Really?
Didn't hustle for it quite as much in the boom times. Uh, when things were going smooth, but now things are getting a little tougher and, uh, we really out hustling for grant money, uh. Junior Alonso Izano and John Lopez and Jack Winheden. Uh, really go out after they go to these, uh, conferences and really, really go out after the grant money. They're. Really hustling it and we've got a, two grant writers that work for the city that were beating on Congress's door.
That is a skill now.
And you, you add, you write for every grant you see. And you, uh, sometimes you have to split them into smaller pots because they'll look at it and say, I can't. Say Congress has a million dollar grant money that they can offer. Well, we, we would love to have all million dollars of it, but, but they're not gonna do that.
Sure.
Split it into fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollar pots, try to grab a couple of them.
Sure, sure.
We're hustling it, that's.
So.
That's free money.
It is free money.
This, sometimes it has strings attached to it. But you apply for the ones that the strings are the strings you need to be pulling.
When, whenever I was on the housing commission, that was one of the things that we did was nonprofit grants. So the city of Grand Prairie, I mean, this was, this has been a while, uh, Mayor Jensen appointed me to that in like two thousand eighteen, I think. Um, but it's like nonprofits, but they had to be Grand Prairie nonprofits. It couldn't be just a big huge like Boys and Girls Club or something. It had to be like Grand Prairie. Nonprofit and they would come and they would talk to us and that was part of our responsibility was to hear them. And then kind of, you know, rate them in number of like, how many, how many citizens do we think that this nonprofit helps every year? And they could use, you know, cause our goal was to get the most money to the most people as best we could. And that was very interesting. It was really enlightening to the whole grant process, but those grant writers, that is not a skill I have. I tried to sit down for about five minutes. I was like, nope.
Nah, I guess they're teaching that now.
It's, it's hard. It's, it's, cause it's, it's so much, it's just so much and so tedious, but I'm glad that we've got them, cause that's good to have them.
We have two full-time grant writers.
So what do you think like, um, well, do you have any appointments that you need filled for any of your committees?
I have one that's been open for a little bit and it's kind of specialized. It's the, uh, Health Commission.
The Health Commission, what do they do?
Uh, they. Try to keep. Any ideas that they can find to get out and nutritious food, things like that. Not having a major health facility in the city makes that one difficult.
Oh.
Because, because there's not a lot of people with that, with that kinda expertise. The last time I was on council. Los Barrios Amigos had just opened up a clinic. Over on. What is now De Laresuerta. And Hill Street. That's closed now and the lady I had on that was the head nurse at that place.
Oh.
So that was a good public health person. She knew public health. They, getting out and, uh, that's closed and. For the life of me, I don't know what they do at the, uh, Parkland Clinic over by the post office.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question.
Uh, that, one day I'm just gonna have to walk in there and just say, hey, uh, you know, what the hell do y'all do here?
That's a great question. It always seems like it's not very busy.
It always seemed like there's eight cars in the parking lot.
And I'm like, Parkland Hospital's not like that.
When that opened, that was gonna be a great big deal. We, I remember very well dental chairs. There were off dental offices, there, it was split up, uh, where they were gonna do community health and walk-ins. And I, for the life of me, I don't know what the heck they're doing there.
Do you think it's cause people just don't know what they do?
I don't think that's the case. I think that, uh, well, yeah, nobody knows what they do. You're correct.
Maybe they just don't go in there because of that? That'd be, that's a good question.
They don't let us know what they're doing there. Except I'm on the city council, I have no clue what.
Is it a county owned building?
It's part of the Parkland system.
And that is part of our county taxes that we pay, so that's interesting.
And, uh, back when Parkland, when we were getting that Parkland clinic, we had big hopes for it. And at the same time, we were hustling Tarrant County to put a JPS clinic, satellite clinic like that. Back then, the satellite clinics they had, Edward and Carrollton, I believe, and they were busy. So I'm not sure what Parkland's plan with this one is and that's something that, uh. I need to find out.
Yeah.
I know a lady had went in there and talked to him one day. And was trying to set up an appointment to see if they could have somebody visit a doctor and maybe get a family doctor. Type thing going there and that wasn't what was going on, so I, I'm not sure what is going on.
That's interesting.
And, uh. Totally honest, I hadn't thought about that again until tonight.
That's interesting. I, well, you just dropped by and it becomes a part of the landscape and you're like.
It's on the way to the post office.
But can, exactly, but considering we don't have a hospital in the city either, that's been a whole thing too.
Well, and we probably won't have a general hospital because there are so many so close.
Yeah.
Baylor and Irving, straight up MacArthur again, uh, Mansfield, two in. Arlington right close and Methodist over here in Dallas right close. I think the one, the building we've got was our old hospital. I've heard there's something in the works like, kinda like a niche. And that's, that building would be good for something like that, you know? I don't know what the niche that they're talking about is, but you know, like an orthopedic hospital or a heart clinic or something like that. I don't think Grand Prairie in our current city limits would get a general hospital just because there's so many that are already working around.
I went to that hospital with a sinus infection. It was so bad one year and I was like the only person in there and I was like, but it was nice inside. It was Texas General at the time and, you know, they weren't in any type of like insurance. They, they, they weren't a part of any, whatever it's called. Um, in network.
Yeah, they weren't any networks.
So I'm like, but that was not very long ago, so I can't imagine that that building is in disrepair on the inside.
The building is, the building is pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, they only really, the bit, the part of it that you went to. They didn't get into the multi-story part very much.
Oh.
But it's still in good shape.
Yeah, yeah.
It is. And they're still using the, the, the clinics around it, the buildings around it, pad sites are still being used. But, uh, that, that hospital would be a great, you know, rehab hospital.
It'd be, it would be, you're absolutely right.
It's, it's perfect for something like that.
So do you have any like goals? Like you ran again, what, what prompted you to do that?
Well, I saw a lot of infighting. On the council. I, I remembered. I remember the days when we. Didn't all vote the same way, but we didn't get angry about it. And we'd go outside on the street and talk about it and shake hands and go home. Most of the time, but we didn't argue publicly. I think that the city council needs, needs to. At least be civil with each other all, all the time. And I was seeing some of that, plus. Cole, love him, good, good kid. He, he grew up in central Grand Prairie. And, uh, I think that's where his heart was with whatever he could get done. And he did a whole lot there. But I didn't see a whole lot going anywhere except central Grand Prairie. And, uh, I'd holler at him, that was, I, the last time, you know, I told him I would go, I wouldn't run against him. But I'd be on his butt every five minutes to do something on the east side of Beltline. And, uh, he, he chose not to run again and I thought at the time. Well, I'm an old man, they won't yell at me.
Has that, how's that turned out to be true?
Mostly.
Okay, well, that's good.
And, uh, the, uh, I could, I could hit the ground running. And. I just thought it was not a time to maybe boost up the, the other two sides of the district.
Yes.
The west side of the district's got the same problems we got over here. They're just slightly different.
That's right.
And, uh. I just thought it was, would be good.
Yes.
I don't know. I don't know how long I'd wanna stay this time. I'm damn sure not gonna stay for twenty-three years. It's. But, uh, I'd like to see, I'd like to be able to span three, four, five people. That. I could get in the system. So they could, uh. Come right along and say, hey, old man, it's time for you to go and kick me and I'd move on down the road and know that. District Five was in good hands.
Do you have any like goals or anything?
Yeah, my goal is let's get a grocery store.
That is one of your goals.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the council had, uh, five, a list of ten goals that they were, that they had before I got on council. When I saw that. The thing that came right out to me was it didn't say anything about bringing our streets back up. One of the things on it was to, uh. Improve Turner Park. That's already in the works. I knew that was already in the works. And it's gonna happen because the, uh, the earmarks are already there for that. Uh, I told him it's time, if we're gonna keep this list at ten, that needs to go away. And by God, we need to bring our streets up. When we passed the sales tax for streets. Way back. Got Kim Breimer to change the law so we could do that. That quarter cent, we were, we were one of the best streets in, in the county. You know, even best streets counting Arlington. We, that was, and we did. But we've grown. And the older streets have gotten worse. And that's not enough money to actually take care of everything. But if we didn't have that sales tax money, we'd be in deep doo-doo with our streets. That helps. It's not enough to do the job, but we've got to supplement that with more money. And they weren't. And our streets, our streets have gotten.
I'm in an interesting neighborhood because our streets are different.
Yeah, you own your streets.
So Avion is interesting and I learned this the hard way. Man, I've got a cough. I'm gonna have to edit that.
Get you a drink.
But when I moved into Avion, which for those of you that don't know, Avion has been there since nineteen forties. And it was always set up as an ownership cooperation. So when we moved in over there, we own all of that, including the streets and which is good and bad. It means that they're private. But it also means that we don't get city money to like do anything with them. So that's what happens when you start, which is we're, I'm working to, we're working to start doing some fundraising and stuff over there to try to get those taken care of because it, you can't just keep putting asphalt over the top of everything. They need to be done well. And so, and we all know that. But you know, all that infrastructure is expensive to your point. But it's necessary and, um, it, it becomes, I'm glad that we have, you know, um, an advocate on the older side of town because you're always gonna need the advocates on the older side of town. They're, they're always gonna be, it's always gonna be the issue unless you can revitalize it like some of the other, you know? But our, our main street is so unique too.
Well, our main street, I hear people compare, well, the best comparison would actually be maybe Grapevine. But it's been doing that for a lot longer.
And it's a highway.
And it's a highway. Well, ours, the highway is going to go away someday.
I've heard that.
Maybe around twenty-eight.
And the other issue is, is the train. That was the big thing.
Train cutting right through the middle of town is, is a huge problem.
Yes. Well, and that it, it's what keeps downtown, like, because it's a highway that runs parallel with that train track. So to try to get it figured out, I, I started talking to Greg Gassner about that years ago.
It's a huge problem. And, uh, UP owns that line, you know? Hey, back then, having your, a train stop on your town was what you wanted. Well, that's what we've got. We don't have a train stop. They did back then, but that's what we've got. You've got the train running through town and we don't have a courthouse.
We don't?
No, we don't have a courthouse square like Denton or McKinney.
Oh, yeah.
You get a lot of people there. Bodies are what we're missing downtown. Is bodies. You know, those places you've got your law offices, you got your places where people at the courthouse go eat. You've got all that. We've got City Hall, but City Hall's not that busy now because everybody can do things online. Plus the city is pushing everybody to do things online. You have to show up to courthouses.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought about that. That's interesting.
You know, even the little town that I came down here from, Gainesville, you just got a reasonably flourishing downtown because you have stuff going on around the courthouse, the county courthouse. Rockwall. McKinney's a great example. Their downtown is really nice.
Granberry.
And it's all the same reason. Uh, we don't have that. We're a straight line and the only other straight line downtown that I could think of right off the top of my head is Grapevine because it's a straight line downtown. I bet they don't have a train track running sixty feet to one side of it. And back when the trains were blowing the whistles all the time, you couldn't even hear anytime train come by, you have to stop talking.
Yeah, I think the firehouse, um, or the gastro, you know, they've done a really good job of incorporating the train into their design, but it's still loud. But they've, they've managed to make a unique spot that people actually want to go to and listen to live music and all that stuff while still listening to that train. I love that they incorporated the railroad or the, the, um, what did the, the, you know, the sections of the car, the rail cars or whatever into their design. Yeah, I thought that was real smart, but again, it's like you can't have a rooftop place. You can't do any of that because it's just so loud. So it does have its own unique and you know, the railroad commission is just not the easiest to deal with in the world. So.
Yeah. And Texas Railroad Commission really doesn't oversee railroads anymore. They're more the oil and gas.
Oh, is that right? Interesting.
Yeah, we did get them to, uh, do the no train horns through town by adding dropdowns, you know, they're double dropdowns now. Back in the old days, they were like this where you could cut through. We had, had to add the double dropdowns and then that, they're not doing the train horn through town anymore.
Oh, that is so interesting. I never even thought about that.
And that quietens it down some, but you still got, you know, diesel engines coming by and all the clickety-clack. My wife and I are avid Amtrak riders. I love the clickety-clack when I'm on the train. I hate that. When I'm next to the train.
That's right. And we also have, we, we still have an air force, what is it? A military base, army base? So we get the helicopters that come in a lot over there.
Yeah, that went away quite a bit for a long time and it's coming back some. The, uh, Texas Air National Guard is still out there and there's still the Royal Singapore, training base. I, now what Royal Singapore is, I don't know, but that's part of, uh, the Texas Air National Guard is actually in Grand Prairie. Uh, the Singapore thing that's down on the south end, it's actually in Grand Prairie. But the rest of all, the old Navy base is in Dallas and is owned by the city of Dallas. They own that property. They're looking at doing something, but they've been looking at doing something for thirty years and I'm not sure they'll do anything in the next thirty years. Uh, they, one time they were gonna put their, uh, auto pound out there. Now they're talking about building again affordable housing out there. You know, I'm not holding my breath. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind. Now what they've done with the reclamation of the old LTV plant with the, uh, warehousing out there and they were able to, that, that property owner was able to grab Home Depot. That, that was a marvel. Now they, there is bit commerce, there's business going on out there and we will get some of that. We, you just ask, uh, ask Don Wans how bad it hurt when that plant closed.
Oh, I bet.
It just killed their business. It was back on Taco Thursdays. Remember we'd be lining out on Main Street. Now sometimes I drove up there and not even had to wait for a car. That's, that's how much different it is. That plant was a huge business for downtown. Now some of that's beginning to pick back up a little because any commerce that goes on out there, okay, Dallas gets the tax, the ad valorem tax and the business perfect property tax, we're gonna get some of that sales tax. And we're gonna get some of that business. So more power to them.
Yeah. I didn't even think about that. No, you're, you're right. I mean, I'm, and I was really happy to see that Home Depot go in over there.
You know, that's, that's in the city of Dallas.
Yes, yes. But I mean, it's nice to not see another.
You know, Billy's cleaner is across the street. He's getting some business.
Exactly, exactly. Well, I'm all about the main street. I love the north side. You know, the, the thing about the north side that's different is yeah, we don't have a grocery store, but I, there's, there's the, it's, it's a double edged sword because you also don't have the traffic. So, uh, you know, the only traffic that I really get ever get bothered by is the train, but now you just figure out how to go around it and you know, you just kind of deal with that. Yeah, but when I lived off of Egyptian, I just remember thinking to myself, I can turn left or right onto carrier and I don't have to worry about there being tons of traffic. But my parents that still live over by Whataburger and Target, they have, they couldn't get out on the street. They had to put in a stoplight over there just to be able to get out. So I'm like, okay, but that's where all the stuff is. So it's, it's just, it's hard.
It's a double edged sword.
It is.
And that's why I think we would be great, with a grocery store. I don't think we need a movie theater.
Oh no, I don't know. No. Whatever happened with that? Is Alamo Drafthouse still going in?
Roll the dice and see how it comes up.
Cause I heard it was going in and then I haven't seen anything happen with it and.
Yeah, that's still up in the air.
Interesting, interesting. Well, what else should we know as Grand Prairie citizens about things that are coming up in the next short period of time?
There's not a lot that's coming up that's not already started. You know, the Top Golf thing that just started.
Oh yeah, I forgot about that one.
And, uh, you know, the Bass Pro is open now and, uh, Andretti's is open now and Main Event is open now. There's going to be another little, uh, commercial strip north of Forum by the, uh, where that gas well is gonna separate everything. There's a gas well there and on the south side of Gaswell, uh, there's something coming. There's some townhouses being built back there, which they did something really cool, I thought. They're building two-story townhouses that are pretty close to a single-family backyards. And the backyard people, the people are going, you know, that's not the cool thing. Maybe I gotta pull back there and my teenage kids, I don't want you. Talked to them and said, you know, what can we do about this? They're putting transom windows in the back. So to look out, you're gonna get the light. To look out the window, you're gonna have to get up on a step ladder.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Excellent idea.
Everything is negotiable. Everything is, you can make anything happen if you just think about it.
So those are coming up and there's gonna be some, the apartments are already there. There's gonna be some good commercials in front of that. Uh, we're looking at trying to get somebody into the old Loop Nine barbecue place. That area there to me is, I'm gonna use an old Yogi Bärism. It's, uh, nobody goes there anymore because it's too popular. I hardly ever go there because I keep can't find anywhere to park. Wasn't enough parking built, even though they went down and went up. Uh, we're gonna have to build more parking there to make that work. Which will cause more parking problems during construction. So, uh, that's just gonna, if, if we're gonna have popular places, we gotta have more parking. That's just a lot.
Absolutely.
And I, I think we overpark. I read somewhere, and I think it was reasonably accurate, it wasn't off of Facebook or something, that there are seven parking spaces for every automobile in America. You go to Walmart down on twenty or over here on one sixty-one, Christmas is full. Eleven months out of the year, it's a quarter maybe.
Well, that's the whole thing with the water show. It's like when you have that during December, that is a huge draw. And it is really hard to get, to park over there. It is, it is.
If you're lucky, the south side of Summit.
Well, and that's when it comes to like the epic, that is one of the things, it is a gym, but it's not Planet Fitness where you just park literally in front of the door and then you just walk in. There's, there's a lot of parking, but it's, it's a long way to get to. So Alicia added the trolleys, which helps with that. But they're, you know.
Talking about adding some more parking over here too.
Oh, really? What about the, um, the playground? Are y'all gonna start the next phase anytime?
I, I'd be lying to you if I gave you an answer.
Yeah, well, I mean, you just got on there. So I don't know, but that's, that's definitely something that I was looking forward to. That, that's, it's a great playground as it is though. I mean, it's awesome, but.
Oh yeah, when, when we went out to sell that, that was my main selling point. You know, building all this, I think is great. I call it the bright and shiny is over here. And, uh, but the playground and some money for downtown that were in that same election. Those were my two selling points. Especially the playground and, you know, this is wonderful. It's fabulous. But, uh, you know, we need to fix our streets too.
Yeah, we do. We do.
So it's, it's kind of, and from what I can tell, when I got back on council and the city manager pulled me over and, uh, one of the, one of the deputy city managers pulled me over and said, keep harping on that because that's a problem. That's to me, we, I love the bright and shiny. I think it's great. And there's a whole lot of bright and shiny going on where we're, I think we're spending too much money on when we gotta get back to the quality of life issues.
Yes, yes. I agree with you a hundred percent.
And that's keeping the water running. Water mains break all, you know, we got this clay. And we're getting way too many because they're too old. And some major renovation is gonna have to be done because you can't keep just patching things.
Well, that's the thing about owning a house too. It's like what, you, you know, when I go in, I can tell all the money was spent on the tile in the bathroom. But nobody bothered to check the pipes underneath the bathroom. And that's not fun to spend money on. That's not, it's, there's nothing sexy about trying to get people to replace clay pipes. As long as they're getting water, they're like, what's, what's the problem? You wanna see the big beautiful things and that's, that's, that's hard sell. It is. And it's expensive.
And then it had, but it, the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets.
That's right. That's right.
Uh, small street's a great example. In between Maine and Beltline. It just got covered up and then finally you, you couldn't overlay it anymore because it, and now it's like driving down a washboard. The price tag has went up from two million to twenty-two million. Now it's so bad if you're gonna have to replace all the drainage.
So how does?
It's just, and that's, and that's why it hasn't been done because it's so expensive. Well, maybe we'll wait a couple of years. Couple of years later, it's more expensive. Oh, I can't do it now because it's too expensive.
So, uh, uh, are y'all just seeing that from all the vendors? Like when y'all get proposals and stuff for jobs and stuff, are y'all seeing the price just?
All prices are astronomical. It's concrete is gone BS crazy. Yeah, concrete is quintupled what it was before COVID.
Do y'all vote on those? Like how do y'all vote on who does work?
Put out proposals to get bids. And, uh, anybody that wants to can bid on it. There are obviously major companies that just work on those kinds of things. So they kind of have an end on the bidding processes. We're working real hard through, uh, John Lopez especially to, and Mike Del Boski to get, uh, more bidders. Very, very the pool because back, uh, when I was on council the first time, anytime you're gonna get a street done, you pretty much knew who was gonna do it. Because they were the bidders and they could, they had to keep the price where you, now we're getting a whole lot more bids. And, uh, one of the problems is with that though, sometimes is the low bid is not gonna be a good bid. So we're having to factor in a couple of extra new factors of past experience and experiences in other places. Uh, some people may have been doing, uh, doing, doing that kind of work, let's say in, um, Hillsborough. But there's not enough work down there and they're moving up into the Metroplex. Well, we wouldn't know them. So we're having to go back and look at their experience in other places. And, uh, it's, it's working. We're getting, uh, better bids. And, uh, I like to keep it local, but state law says you can't.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, you have to go with, uh, with the best, the, you don't have to go with the lowest bid, but you have to go with the best bid. So you can put in other factors. Low bid sometimes is the best, but sometimes it's not. You have to look at other factors. But we do, we do that buy bid process. So it's, it's, uh, that's how you try to keep your price down.
Is that one of those commissions that you have that, or no?
No, that goes through the, uh, the department where it is. Like if it's streets, they'll, streets will put out a request for bids or request for proposals. And, uh, they'll bring them in and then they'll, they'll judge them and they'll come back, come to council with the top three. And the council will choose.
So y'all have to vote on all those. That's so fun, isn't it?
No, and as a general rule, you know, you'll ninety-five percent of the time go with the one the staff tells you is the best bid.
That's interesting.
Because they're professionals at it. You know, I'm not a professional civil engineer. I'm gonna trust the civil. I'm gonna trust the civil engineer to tell me which one's the best bid. Now, if the best bid turns out to be his brother-in-law, that's a complete. But we have, we, we haven't had that. I've heard other cities that have had that problem.
Well, there's a lot of nepotism, you know, laws that, that they put in place to try to keep that from happening, which is, which is a good thing. I mean, unless the brother-in-law is really good. Well, so how often do y'all meet?
City council meets first and third Tuesdays of, uh, every month except June. No, September, July, depending on where Fourth of July is, that'll change. Uh, October because of National Night Out and December because of holidays.
Are y'all gonna talk about like homestead and taxes and all that? How often do y'all do that?
Uh, during the budget process, once a year. The fiscal year is, uh, October to October. We have to have our budget placed usually at the end of August, first part of September. Decad will give us the tax rolls, the certified tax rolls. In mid-August, so we'll know how, then I'd have an idea of how much tax money you, you collect about ninety-seven percent of it. And, uh, so that gives you an idea. Then you gotta judge what you believe the sales tax is gonna be. Which is, uh. A fine art of guessing.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, then you, you have, your budget has to balance per state law.
Do you think that the home values are gonna go down? How do you think that's gonna? Do you think that that's gonna affect anything with taxes moving forward? It went up so high.
I want, for me, I'd like to see the home prices drop for the city. We don't wanna see the home prices drop.
Well, that's, it's like when you're selling a house, you wanna see the appraisal high, but when you're living there, it's, yeah, yeah.
As much new construction is coming on. As many people are moving here. For the life of me, I don't know how they can afford it, but I think the prices are gonna stay stable for the near future anyway. And, uh. I, you know, for the life of me, I don't know how you can afford it.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
A lot of that's why you see. Kids living with their parents, living with their grandparents, living with their cousin. You have a lot of people. You know, a twenty-five hundred square foot, four-bedroom house may have two or three different generations in it. Because it's the only way you can afford it.
That's right. We, and we've gotten kinda spoiled, uh, you know, that's how it used to be. That's how a lot of countries still are. Um, you know, when everybody does well, you can afford to move out and everybody has their own house. And now it's, you, you are seeing that a lot more.
That's why we see so many cars.
At each house. That's exactly right.
You think everybody drives two cars? They don't. They only drive one. There's a lot of people.
Right, right. Exactly. And then they build, you know, they add on all those different, the square footage on all those houses, but. Um, no, it's, you know. I don't know. It's, it's, the appraised value is something that everybody's really concerned with. The thing about it is, is what I tell people is the city. Does not tax, but just a small amount of what your house is worth. They're just a very small part of your whole taxation. You also get taxed by the county. The biggest part is gonna come from the school district. And, um, but what I don't know that a lot of people understand, it's a, it's a very complex system. But what a lot of people don't understand is y'all set the tax rate for your portion of the tax bill. So like if city council only takes twenty-five percent of your taxes, so if your house is appraised a hundred thousand dollars. And then y'all take twenty-five percent of what we would tax, you only control that small part. So what you can do is you also set the homestead exemption amount. So if people are going to go to their city councilmen or their school board members, they are a taxing entity. Y'all, that's why you're elected, cuz you have the ability to tax people. Um, but that's one of the ways that people can, you, they can go to you and say, hey, listen. I would like to see that less. I'd like to see that at a smaller percentage, you know?
I was on council when the, uh, senior exemption was instituted. Was the state allowed it. They didn't say you had to do it. It was, at one time it wasn't allowed. They passed a law that said it was allowed and then. We acquiesced to commit demand. People saying, hey, we need to do that. You know, you have to go into something like that knowing that you're just shifting that burden.
Yes, it's true. And that's one of the things about bringing in all these businesses. Because what they're trying to do is to set, offset some of those taxing. You're trying to get all the sales tax that comes from the businesses.
You get, you get sales tax, you get property tax, you get business per, personal property tax, plus. Let's say a large deal, uh. Lockheed's already here, but if something like Lockheed was gonna come in. You get all that property tax and they don't hardly use any services.
Right, right. Well, we're about to have, Georgia kinda shared something about getting a, a data center. Which that's, one thing I didn't think about was, yeah, it does take up a lot of space, but there's, it doesn't, it doesn't need a lot of services.
Need a lot of services.
So it's not like you're creating something that's gonna have more traffic problems or anything like that.
Plus that, the only, the big selling point of that is this way, it's, you, you throw, you throw a rock from it and you're in Venus.
Yeah, it's way down on the south side. Yeah.
But the flip side to that is it's way, way down on the south side, so we gotta go into. Go into, uh, agreements with probably Venus or somebody others down there to. Supply some services. We're not gonna send a fire truck down there if I catch it on fire. They're gonna have to do it for us.
Right, right.
Until we grow down to there. And, uh, so there's, you know. There's, you, you gotta, there's this, then there's that. Always gonna be that in everything.
Yeah. But no, I think that's a good point. Like, um, I, i- if people just. The, the, the tax, the property tax, nobody really understands how that works. That's, it, as a citizen, I, that's one thing that they should know how that works.
Tom Hart used to have a, uh, graphic that he would use. We would pick the, uh, the median house price, which is. Probably now I would say the median house, that's your realtor. Boy, you think, two fifty?
Three, I think it was like three twenty.
And do the point zero six six cent tax deal and come up with what that cost was. And then pick something, uh, it usually was something like, uh. Basic cable with HBO was about the same cost as your taxes were.
I think, that's interesting.
For that, you get running water. You, you know, you pay for it, but you get running water. You have the access to it. You have a fireman that'll come put it, you'll have somebody for nine dollars, nine dollars a month come pick up your trash.
Sure, sure.
You know, when the rate goes up, I grab and raise hell because rate went up, but I just don't like rate raising. I'm not gonna beg, come pick up your trash for nine dollars a month, I guarantee you that.
Well, and that's true. Like there, I mean, you do have to have services and I think Grand Prairie does do a very good job of providing services. And, um.
And it's for a pretty reasonable rate.
It is. They're, um, you know, they're, what is it? I think it's Kennedale. When we were talking to, cuz I'm a part of the Arlington Board of Realtors and one of the things that we did was we talked to people that were running for government. To try to see who would be good, you know, cuz we're all about property tax rights. That's what's important to us. But Kennedale wanted to keep their city very small. When I say small, I mean, they didn't wanna bring in a bunch of businesses. The flip side of that is you can only tax people so much to get all the services that you're gonna wanna get. And their big thing was, um, they had this, like, bridge or something that was like. Obstructing fire trucks from being able to get down to certain parts of the city. But they didn't wanna bring in businesses. And it's so hard because it's like, yeah, okay, you do get, you do lose a little bit. You do. You lose a little bit of the ease to get down places. It's a little bit more traffic-y. But you also offset some of the cost of living there by letting other people pay for it. It's, it's hard, you know?
It's a tough balance.
It is, it is.
Go back to Irving with all their apartments. They're, you know, Las Colinas is Irving saving grace.
Yes, absolutely.
And had it, did they not have all of that commercial in Las Colinas? With all that apartments they've got, they would be in really bad shape.
They would be.
Because you don't, you know, you have to factor in the amount of services that it, that they use. I like, I like industrial, but not just a empty warehouse is paying fifteen people fourteen dollars an hour. I like industrial like, uh. Like, uh, oh lord, Lockheed's good. There's a lot of good industrial like that up in, uh, the great southwest area that are actually manufacturing places. Where you, the, the pay is pretty good. They don't hardly use any city services at all. Plus they've got stuff inside the building that you get to tax.
That, that, there's a rule that changed not too long ago where it was like, you get the tax for the origination. Of where it comes out of, not where it goes to. And that was good for us cuz we have a lot of those places in Grand Prairie.
Yep, and we lost one that was really good when we had the Office Depot warehouse. Uh, that was huge.
Oh, that's good. That's a good point. But well, now the Home Depot's there. Oh, we, and that's in Dallas. We don't even get that.
That's, that's in Dallas. And that wouldn't really count cuz it goes to the store. Right to the person, that's what counts.
Oh, I got you.
But, uh, those kinds of things are, that's, you, you have to. Take some of the load off of the homeowners. You shift the burden is what you're doing. And when you do the senior exemption or you raise the homestead exemption. You're shifting that burden just a little bit onto. The guy that's got the rent house.
Yes, and, uh, what is it? There's no solutions, only compromises?
He's in the business, so he can, he passes that on. And that raises the rents, but you ship, you ship the burdens. And that's all you're doing. You're just shifting it around.
That's really all everything is. It's just shifting the burdens and figuring out how everybody's gonna. And that's why, you know, if you're gonna lose grants, then you have to encourage people to give their service, give themselves. Of service to their local community. Grand Prairie does that really well, but like, if you're gonna lose grant money. Then you're gonna have to show up for the nonprofits that you really find are, are important. And, uh, donate directly or, you know, so it's, it's, it's all just, it's all a negotiation game.
Yep, that's all it is.
It is.
And, uh, that's one good thing about the newer stuff that's got built, let's say from, uh. The early nineties on. The residential started requiring HOAs and public improvement districts. That helped take some of the load off of the city. Now it's a tax for those folks to live there.
It is.
But the good thing about that one is, you know about that going in.
You do. When you go to buy, you should. Yeah, that's part of the thing we have to disclose. Public improvement districts is like, um, like if you're gonna build, I don't know, like a Westchester for example. There's gonna be part of that money that they put their own infrastructure into the area.
And they do their own beautification.
They do their own beautification.
Exterior fencing.
Yes, and so Westchester's interesting cuz there's like ten HOAs in Westchester and they're all, it just depends on when they were built.
Basically all in the same pit.
Yes, they are. So when you buy a house over there, that's part of the thing is that you have to know, it's not expen, it's not really that bad, but. If you have a bunch of houses, it makes a huge difference. Uh, and you can tell that they spend their money on that cuz when you drive through Westchester, it's really pretty and, you know.
And you know, I was shocked, uh, that. Some neighborhoods came themselves to the council saying, can we make a pit?
Can you make a pit after the fact? Can you?
Trying to think of a couple of examples. I know where they're at, but I don't know the name of the, uh, the developments anymore. But there's a one-off of Carrier that's got about sixty-five houses in it. That came in and asked for there to be a pit.
So the homeowners themselves asked for that?
Fifty-one percent of the homeowners can come in and ask for it. It has to be the homeowner. They can come in and ask to create a pit.
And that's not, that's not an HOA.
That way they've got money to gussy up things or. Say the developer built an exterior fence that's falling down, uh, they can. The pit can come back, they can ask to create a pit so they can come back in and fix that.
You're making my gears work. That's interesting. I'd, I'd like to look into that.
Yeah, there's been, uh, when I was on the council previously, we did two or three of them. Cause I was, you know, I'm going, you guys know you're, you're taxing yourselves.
But so how does that work? Like they tax themselves and then they get a payment from the city every? Okay, okay.
Yep, they, they have to run their budget through their board. Then their board sends the budget to the council. The council rubber stamps it ninety, nine point nine percent of the time. And they get the money, the tax money back from the city.
What is the different, like, what would be the advantage to that over an HOA? Is it just, they can't control as much?
Well, an HOA could do that, but a pit can do it.
Without the oversight of an HOA?
Yeah, well, you have a pit board, but like Westchester, they can conglomerate all those HOAs into one big pit. And, uh, do more with it.
But it's not controlling the homeowner's house. It's controlling Nick's.
No, it's, it's pub, it's, um, joint property. Public use, public use property. So you have a green space park. The pit would do that. The HOA would do, would not do that most of the time.
Gotcha, okay. An HOA controls more of like, can't paint your garage that color, you can't do your shrubs this way.
Well, and, and some HOAs tried to do, you know, like a community center and things like that. You know, a lot of times that got political, so if a pit's doing it, it's better.
That's interesting. I didn't know that you could do it after the fact.
Yes, you can, you can come back if you have a geographic boundary and it's a common boundary. Of some kind, you know, you don't just. You don't gerrymander it like they do political.
That's true.
The fifty-one percent of those people. I think it's fifty-one. Don't quote me on that. It may be, it may be a super majority of them. But it has to be the property owners. So when they do new developments now, the, uh, the developer runs the pit until he sells up enough.
That's what I assumed happened all the time. I assumed it had to be a part of the development, but that's not true. I should know that cuz I feel like that's part of my job.
One of them's Hunter's Glen or something like that.
Hunter's Glen, oh yeah, I know that one.
They created the pit after the fact.
Oh, okay.
Hi-Hawk is another one. They created a pit after the fact.
What about on Carrier, like all those exterior fences, um, you know, I'm talking about?
That was, that was done by the city with grant money.
With grant money?
And that was, you know, that's a major thoroughfare that was a hodgepodge of.
We're talking about by the public lab, the, the main public library. And it's great. It's great. It's, it's, you could tell. It made a difference.
And you know, it's, it's, it's the same. You, you're going in, the city wants to go in and do something nice. Some people, well, I don't want that.
Of course not. Right, of course.
Well, my gate that I've been using for a hundred years. Uh, but it's, that, it really looks better.
It does.
Irving did that on MacArthur because I go up down MacArthur a lot and, uh. They took, there was an area there that just had eighteen thousand different fences and they came back, came through and replaced them all. Made it all nice, looked nice and pretty like we did on Carrier. They did that first and when we started to deal on Carrier, I was going, yes, they did that after I was on council. And I was going, yeah, this is a great, this is wonderful. That Indian Hills neighborhood over there. Is. Another one that still has pot, too many potholes and too many water lane, main breaks, but we're working on that. That's even more predominantly Hispanic than where I live. And. There are a few people over there that are getting to where they understand that, hey, we can. We can go talk to the city. A lot of the time folks were, you know, okay, this is where I live and I just have to live with it.
I think that's such a good point. I'm so glad you brought that up because Grand Prairie is a very diverse city. It's very diverse and, um, I do think that you're right. What happens is. When you have the language barrier, like what you're talking about, you also have less people that are running for, for council and school board. Because you don't have as many that know how to, that, that, they can't communicate. That is definitely an issue. And, um, that, I think that, that's just such a good point, is, is you're, you're, you're a homeowner too. And, um, that, I think that, that's just such a good point is, is you're, you're, you're a homeowner too. Come and talk to us. Like you have these abilities to do that.
Absolutely.
That's, that's such a good point.
And, uh, and it's getting, it's getting a lot better. And I hate to say this, but sometimes the squeaky wheel does get to grease.
Yes, that is true. That is true.
And it doesn't need to be that way. It should be different. When you have so much that needs to be done and only X number of dollars to do it with, you, the wheels that are squeaking are the ones that sometimes get old.
Well, and I think that a lot of people also have this idea that y'all are literally living on your phone twenty-four hours a day and people are calling you off the hook. And that's really not always the case. Sometimes you might not even know there's a problem. Nobody's told you or said anything to you about it.
If it, it's geographic, my district's geography is so big, I can't go drive down every street once a year. You know, I, I have to depend on people to tell me what's going on. The same thing, I'm, I'm glad we're talking about that. The same thing isn't in play with, uh, police and code.
Oh, yes.
If you, I, I'm a big fan of report everything. If you've got a problem, let's say, uh, you believe that there's, uh, too many cars are going too fast or too many people run a stop sign or there's too much, there's a little bit, just enough vandalism in your neighborhood to be a bother. You know, it's not just all hell breaking loose, just enough to be a bother. Well, let's say, uh, somebody stole a flower pot off of your front porch. Maybe they stole, uh, Amazon delivery off another guy's. Okay, you didn't know he did, it happened to him. And another guy down the road had his tire and I've poked in his tire or something. He didn't know what happened to you. If everybody would report that, just call Police Department, fill out a report. It, you're never, you're ninety-nine percent of the time, you're not gonna see a policeman come talk to you. Fill out the report because the chief and his deputy chiefs take those reports. And that's how they figure out where the hotspots are. If you don't fill out, don't turn it in, they don't know. How the heck do you expect them to know that there's somebody going around your neighborhood vandalizing it? They don't know. If, if you report it, they've got it in their computer system and they will take care of those kinds of things. And the same thing with code. If you've got problems in your neighborhood, I don't wanna turn my neighbor in. Unless I've been over there and talked to him and said, hey, man, you need to clean this crap up. And he gives me the finger and, you know, then I might turn him in.
But it's good about, I mean, you're, to your point about the, the red lights and all those things, like, that's, that's good because, you know, you don't, I mean, uh, my, right there on Great Southwest, right when you come out of my neighborhood, that is a red light running area. But I don't ever tell, I mean, I, you know, complain about it, but I don't tell people that should know. And it's like, I honk, because I want them to know. Like, you just ran a red light, but you just kind of, what happens is people start to accommodate their behavior to what they see. So it's like, well, I just won't, I just know that I can't go right away when it turns green. I have to wait for a second. Um, but it's, it, it definitely, you know, you gotta have, the right people need to know that the problem exists.
That's it. They don't know that they can't do anything about it.
That's right.
You know, I, I get calls, not a whole lot, but every now and then, you know, they've been stealing my Amazon for the last two months.
I didn't know.
A month and a half ago, you should have told me.
Right, right. Well, if you get on the Ring app, then you know how many dogs we have wandering around.
Our doorbell goes off all the time.
I know, I know. And it's like, oh, someone at my front door again. Nope, just kidding. Although my dogs did, we, my dogs did figure out my dog and then our next door neighbor dog that they're friends and she comes over to visit all the time. They figured out how to open up the gate in the backyard. They're like, oh, if I will just scoop my snout up. So I was, I went to the store or something and my daughter was home and I said, the dog here in the front. Because the ring went off and they're just out there having themselves a little party. So it does come in handy occasionally. But then every once in a while, it'll catch like a car that drives by and I'm like, oh my gosh, how many no, notices do I need? But Ring is good though, I mean.
My wind chimes will do it sometimes.
My, my, my flag is right there and it never catches my flag, thank goodness. Maybe the, you know, AI overlords know that it's not like a problem or something, I don't know. I'm glad that I have it, especially when you have kids, you know, it's, but, but then I never realized that Ring came with the neigh, with the community group. So like next door has the community group. And of course, then it's just everybody that's retired that sits at home is like, do y'all recognize that car? I don't recognize that. That car wasn't there yesterday. With the ring, it's, there's another dog out, there's another dog out. And so, um, and everybody's just trying to help, make sure that if your dog's out, you know.
And you brought up something, you know, RPD actually does monitor Facebook and Nextdoor.
Well, it's, it's an, I mean, if people are posting it themselves.
It's a, it's a, it's a resource.
Absolutely. I mean, it, uh, you know, it's not like they're going into private people's information, but it's like if they start to see the same things over and over again.
They, they look for trends.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. Um, yeah, and I, I know if, if, maybe on people are listening to me, you know, right there along that little Beltline Road, we call it the sim, the headstone corner where it's these, it's those concrete blocks.
Y'all got the blocks at Skyline?
Yes, so we were going, we need to figure out how to get our fence around there. Like I, whatever we needed to do, whatever they did on Carrier, we need to do right there. So you, I need to figure out the process. Write a grant or something, whatever I need to do.
It's y'all's property.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm like, we need to figure out how to get the, get that going.
Historic neighborhood.
I know.
There's your, there's your.
There's your trick right there. I know it. And it's, that's, that's what started me looking, well, that's not true. I, I tried to kind of look into the grant thing in a previous, but I started doing it here and I'm like, there's, there's so much to it. And it is a full-time job. It is a full-time job. But you're right. I mean, we don't take advantage of that enough, for sure, but.
Yeah, and Grand Prairie's just chalked a little historic places like that.
Thank goodness for Bonnie. I mean, and, and, and just the Grand Prairie Historical Organization, which I don't know a lot of people even know that we have. It's such a cool place. And they're very passionate about it. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm in a position where, like, doing estate sales, I do come across things that I get to donate and it's very cool that we have people. I mean, literally someone will come from the historical organization. I think his name is John. He'll come by and he's like, do you have anything that could be of interest to the muse? He'll buy it. But most of the time, you know, homeowners wanna donate it, but we have a local or, you know, museum. Not a lot of cities have that, so.
No, that was an old veterans' building that, uh, that they kind of dissipated when we built the new building over there. And that building sat empty for a while and the historical aid organization came to city council and said, hey, you got this empty building, can we use it?
That's a great, great idea.
That was just, you know, one day I'd like to see that get more in cahoots with the library system and maybe be a, be a part of the library.
That would be a great thing.
Way you've got more eyeballs on it. And that, the more eyeballs you got, the more people that know about it, the more, the more people know, hey, my grandmama had a something from Theo's Fried Chicken when it was there.
And people don't realize, like, gee, just even that picture of you and grandma and people you don't know could, could be important. So donate it, you know? Um, but no, I mean, and I think, I think Founder's Day's coming up. Uh, Deckman, Alexander Deckman is our founder, for those that don't know. And we're having a, um, I think it's Alexander Deckman Day's coming up soon, so. Well.
On the historical thing, there's a old cemetery on MacArthur over by our house. Uh, maybe three or four blocks away. It's the Jordan Hite Cemetery. It has steps going up and down over the fence. My wife and I, we, we don't wanna go mosey around. We went in there and it is just, you could spend half a day.
Really?
There's some old woodmen's, woodmen of the world, carvings and trees. It's just fabulous. And, um, the, the historical plaque in front of it says some of it, but the lady that runs it, that owns it, manages whatever they do, it's a corporation. She filled me in on some of it. The, uh, Jordan Street over off Carrier Parkway, that was part of the Jordan's farm ranch, cotton plant. Way back then. Bowls, there's Bowls people buried there. There are Rob, the Robertson Street, they're there. Uh, Graham family is there. A lot of the streets from Grand Prairie are buried in that cemetery.
Isn't that so interesting?
And, uh, my wife and I, we found the lady. She's in California. She's an actress. Uh, Hillary Dahl, who, her maiden name was Hite. She laughs about it. She's got four brothers in Dallas that are lawyers and she's the one out there in California taking care of the cemetery. For a exceptionally reasonable price, she sold my wife and I a little four foot square thing that we're gonna put our arms in.
Oh, wow.
That old historic cemetery, uh, and I, the historical organization has had people out there a couple of times to walk around and look. It's a, it's a trove of stuff. You wouldn't know that. Okay, you, you see, one guy out there, uh, was sitting at the table waiting for John, at the head table, waiting for John Kennedy at the Market Hall.
Really? That's very interesting. I don't even know if a lot of people that moved to Grand Prairie even know about that. It, it, like, one of the things that, when you go into Don Wans or you go into, it used to be, um, uh, the Brass Bean, they had a lot of pictures up about just, just historical stuff. And that picture of Kennedy coming down through the middle of Main Street is a very famous picture.
Standing up on a car.
He was, he was standing up on a car with just a crowd of people. I mean, the whole street was just completely full. But again, that's a highway and it went between Dallas, it goes between Dallas and Fort Worth.
Bankhead Highway.
That's right. So we do, we have, we have a lot of history here. Grand Prairie has a very interesting history. I started going back and, um, just really trying to research how we came to be. And what's so interesting is, um, you know, even the history with like, uh, when, because we, we, I think we were incorporated when slavery was still a thing, but right at the end of it. So we have, um, now I don't know if it's the same Jordan you were talking about, but like, um, Dalworth, uh, the area of Dalworth, um, that has an interesting history. So we had, when, you know, uh, um, when the slaves were freed, we had one of the slaves that came with our founder got a big parcel of that land. There's a, there's a cemetery over there too, that they, that they really, you know, if, unless somebody owns a cemetery, keeping it up is always a challenge. And so, um, but Dalworth has a really interesting, rich history. Um, so our city really has always been pretty progressive socially when it comes to like, um, you know, just a lot of the stories that come with it, but we've always tried to preserve our history too.
As much as possible.
As much as possible. And we have that, that historic, it's, it's a really pretty museum. It's not huge, but they've done a good job of keeping it up. They take it very seriously. And they curate over there. And there's, there's always, you know, educational things going on. I need to have them on again because I, I did interview Bonnie a long time ago. But I need to do that again because they've been doing a lot of like classes, on historical classes that you can learn about different things and.
Yeah, and they'll take trips and.
Yes. And now we're getting a new, um, festival. What did I see? Texas Country?
Texas Monthly.
Texas Monthly is doing.
Magazine. The old, uh, Four Country Reporter has become Texas Country Reporter. And they've been doing it in Waxahachie. And they are moving that to Grand Prairie next year.
So next, next April? Okay. Or is it this April?
Nah, don't give me the line. I can't recall.
It might, it might be this year, but.
I think it's this year. I think you're right because we moved, uh, Main Street Fest back to October to make up, to allow for that.
Oh, we did.
It's gonna be in April.
Oh, okay. So y'all rearranged the calendar. Okay.
Calendar there. So it is, and, uh, they've been doing it in Waxahachie. It has a history. They bring in, you know, fifty thousand people. It's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be great. And they're gonna do it for the next four or five years here at least. And, uh, hopefully longer. And when we get, it'll, all of that will get a lot better too, when, uh, the development at Calvary is finished. Which should be, I, the city's looking at twenty twenty-eight. I think we're optimistic. Uh, I'm thinking more late twenty twenty-nine, but, uh, if it's twenty twenty-eight, I'll be glad.
That's not that long away.
That's, I think we're a little optimistic at twenty twenty-eight.
I can't even believe it's twenty twenty-five.
And that will be the same time that the, uh, city takes over one eighty. And the roundabouts are built on each end of it.
You're building roundabouts? I just talked about that. We were in Fort Worth and I was like, I was like, roundabout, we don't have any roundabouts in Grand Prairie. If you can figure roundabouts out, they're a lot faster than stoplights.
Yeah, and that, the corner of Dowers and Main kind of begs itself for one. And, uh, the other one will be down on the far end of town, down at, uh, Isle of Wild and Jefferson, where Jefferson and Main and Isle of Wild come together.
Okay.
Uh, down close to the salvage yard area. That's kind of dangerous right now. And that will be the other one that's entry one and then down on the other end. And, uh, we're planning on cutting Main Street down to two lanes of traffic between Beltline and, uh, the roundabout at least. Which will be a problem. That'll be a problem. It'll, it'll be a headache for the people that are there now. Especially during construction. Uh, after, you know, there'll have, be less cars driving by, but the cars that do drive by will be driving by slower. Which helps. And I, I thought that that would be when Uplift built their, their, uh, school, the old church. Traffic on Church Street in front of Top Line was just awful, you know. You know, they parked, picked it in. I went and talked to Bud Bobbitt and said, man, you know, he, at first he was grumping about him, blocking his parking lots and stuff. And Bud has told me that this is probably the best thing's happened to him because they're sitting there and they're looking and saying, they didn't even know that was there.
Nah, I'm sure that they did not.
So sometimes if you drive by slower, you'll notice things that you didn't know. Now, when you're driving down Main Street at, I don't know what speed limit is. We drive down Main Street at forty miles an hour. That's about what most of us do.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we're probably speeding. You know, I'm, I don't see what's there. And I will go, I go to Roma's, I go to Don Wans, I go to Firehouse, uh, but that's a destination. I might see more destinations. I may not stop the first time I drive by, but then I, if I drive by at forty and I don't see it, I don't know it's there. If I drive by slower on a two-lane road without the truck traffic. Then I'll know it's there and I'll more likely come back than if I didn't know it was there at all. Plus, the other good thing is we'll take the truck traffic off of Main Street. That will all have to go down to Jefferson or it's gonna have to go up to thirty. Jefferson's three lanes each way, uh, it can handle that better.
Oh, yeah, I guess it is.
And, uh, it has less red lights. I drive to work from my house over to, over off of Martin Luther King in Jefferson. I don't drive down Main. I get on Jefferson's quicker.
Always. I don't, I don't drive down Main Street unless I really have to, which is not good.
So that, that one, and plus getting bodies, some apartments at Calvary, uh, looking between three and four hundred units, one and a half people per unit. You got six, seven hundred people that can walk to something.
Yes, that's a big thing. We went to, we went to some concert, I don't know, it was some cover band or whatever over at, um, the theater. And then we walked down to Firehouse. And I was like, I didn't even know the last time I walked down. Of course, we were the only ones that were walking. It was like, I don't know, nine o'clock at night. And, um, you know, but I would love to see that more because that's a whole thing with Grapevine. It is packed some days. You can't even walk down there some days. But again, it's, you just gotta make it to where it's, it's pedestrian. Friendly, right?
And then maybe the empty buildings, and I know the one you're talking about.
We all know the one I'm talking about.
And, uh, I wish that somebody that cared owned it. But maybe they'll sell it someday. But then maybe those will fill up, you know, that, that's a perfect place like you could put, I don't drink, we'll start with that, but a wine bar.
Wine bar, a soda fountain, an old fashioned soda fountain.
Like, like the old big state up. Like, like the old big state up in Irving.
Mm hmm.
Uh something like that, you know, and, and you'd. Walk out, walk out of, walk out of the uptown and go. Do something.
That's right.
Rather walk out of the uptown, cross the street, get your car.
And go home. Exactly, exactly.
You know, when we do something at the uptown, we'll probably go to Roma's.
Mm hmm.
You know. It doesn't work Firehouse, cause it's too far to walk.
I know it is all the way down there.
From there.
It is.
But if we start doing stuff. Where the Calvary is too.
Right.
But for. During the construction, it's gonna be a big giant P I T A.
Yeah.
It's going to be a problem and uh. We'll just have to try to help people get through it.
Yeah, yeah.
You can, we can maybe incentivize it somehow to say, you know. Stay here. It's gonna get better.
It's the light at the end of the tunnel. It's, everybody needs it to be a successful place. It, it's, it's necessary. And I think people wanna see it be successful. But it is, I mean, you know.
And I don't know, I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know how they're gonna design it, but if I get some input on the design. Uh I'm. If it's down to two lanes. Maybe bring back the head end parking.
Head in parking.
Where you can, you know, like it used to be.
Mm hmm.
Now, the problem with it before was you can't back out, cause you're backing out on the.
Right, right.
Two lanes, you've got some space there to use to back out.
Sure.
And you can get more cars in there. You can have some parking closer to where you're at.
Sure.
I don't know. We'll have to see how civil engineers come up with that and. If they wanna listen to an old man say, hey, you know. At least some head in parking so you can get some close in parking to, to places uh so people like me that hobble.
Right, well.
Can, can get there easier.
And with kids.
Yeah.
I mean.
You don't want, you don't have to run across the street. Oh, that'll be a good thing too. When we take that back, we put a red light there at Second Street.
That's good. That is good. Well, I'm glad that you're in my district and you're, you understand the importance of that area and that you're there to advocate for us. So, thanks for coming and talking to me.
If I, if I fail, kick me.
Well, I'll just have you on and I'll just bring on callers. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm just kidding. I like people to know my phone number, you know, when I campaigned, I put my phone number on everything and uh. Email, you can always email the city. And they get it right to us. They, you tell them you wanna send it to District Five or District Six or whichever one. And it'll come right to us within an hour.
You want me to put it on the description of the video?
Sure.
So people will know.
Address, yeah.
I'll put the email address for sure.
Absolutely.
All right.
And uh. I like to be accessible.
Mm hmm.
You know, I, here's, here's what I, I like to say about me. Is. I punch the time clock like ninety percent of my district does every day.
Mm hmm.
You know, I'm, I still work forty five hours a week. And mo- most of people working fifty, sixty hours a week now, cause they gotta build and afford the house.
Right, right.
But, but you know. We gotta take care of each other.
That's right.
And we're kinda the, the common people, you know. I don't, I think that city councils need people like Ron.
Mm hmm.
That uh. That have a big worldview. They're, they're up, they're up looking at the whole forest.
Mm hmm.
Uh and it also needs people like me that see the trees.
That's right. It's a very good combination and you're right about that. You don't wanna miss out on one way or the other because. That's how you get a good, a good um um. Mix, just, you know, a good balance, I would say.
Yeah, if, if it was all.
Visionaries.
Working staff, working people like me.
Mm hmm.
We probably wouldn't have big, all the big shiny stuff.
That's right. We wouldn't be here right now.
But without working people like me. We've got potholes and.
That's right.
Failing, failing water systems.
That's, yes, yes.
So it, it takes a good mix of that.
Yeah, I completely agree.
We gotta have a mix of young and old. We gotta have a mix of. Hispanic and African American and we're getting, you know, when I was on council before. Ruthie, Terry Jackson, Georgia. Were the ladies. I am so happy to see. What we've got now, you know.
Yes, yes.
I helped John when he ran against, you know, Mr. Frigo. I liked Dick, you know, I worked with Dick for years. John was new.
Mm hmm.
John had new ideas. And I'm glad John's on the city council. He's a good man and Mike's a good man. Sometimes Mike and I go after each other, but we know. The thing is, we've got the same goal in common.
That's right.
And uh as long as we have that. And get that all, most of the time. We'll be all right.
And as long as you have citizens that keep you. Engaged with what's the, cause that's, that's the hard part is like, once you become an elected official, you're already separated.
Yeah.
And people already stopped telling you all, like you think that people just are constantly in your ear telling you this stuff. What actually happens is they stop telling you so much of the truth. And they just, because they're like, oh, now you're one of them. And so it's like, you have to have those people. That engage you.
Yeah.
And keep you. There, you know.
Yeah, and, and I try really, really hard not to let anybody think I'm one of them.
That's right, that's right.
You know, I, I try really hard and it still happens.
It does.
It's cause all here's the, you, you guys.
Yes, yes.
No, 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 you guys is me and you.
When I started doing this, people, certain people were like, how do you get people to come on? I'm like, I ask them. People, it, there's such a disconnect because people think it's so hard to get a hold of any of y'all. And I'm like, literally, it's not. Y'all are all, every, not one person that I've asked to come talk to me has ever said no. And it's usually not even a question like, you didn't say, what kind of podcast is this? You were just like, sure, Jenny, no problem. And so. I think that people need to realize, number one, y'all are all still our, our neighbors.
Yep.
That's the thing about local government is y'all are all neighbors. You can't be a city councilman if you don't live in the city or the area that you're in. Um but you're still one of us too. You're still a citizen in the town that benefits from the things that go on in the town. And have the consequences of the things that go wrong in the town. So it's like. Just, just say it. It's like people get so worried and it's just like, just. Say it. You know? And what I love is when elected officials like don't make you feel bad for having an opinion.
No.
I mean, but you're right. If everybody's working, it, it, there's a difference between going and yelling, screaming and, you know, making a big scene. But there's another with, okay, well. You know. Facts don't care about your feelings all the time. There, there's potholes there. Let's, let's fix it, you know.
Yeah, and, and, and I'll start right off the bat saying I'm probably not the brightest bulb in the box. But there's somebody out there that is.
Hmm.
And if they'll let me know. You know. Then we can work together and. Get there.
That's right.
You know, that, I, if I don't know about it.
Yeah.
I can't help it.
Well, my hope with this podcast is to, the reason I started it was because I knew so many people on the council and on school board. And I was like, well, I have these conversations with people all the time. So why don't I just let people hear these conversations so that they could be encouraged to get more involved civically in their city? And this, I love the city. I want people to be more involved. I hope that's what it encourages. Um, cause I mean, I, it can be very dis- it, when you only have a hundred people voting in an election. You know, it is. It's like, come on, let's get that number up there. So hopefully people start to learn, what is my city council person supposed to be doing? What is their job? What are they responsible for? Who is my city council person? And um so that's what I hope.
Yeah, the, the number of people voting in city elections is, is.
Abysmal.
Yes, that's.
It's abysmal.
That's the best word for it.
Yes.
Uh this last time I.
And a little bit embarrassing, if I'm being honest.
This last time I ran, there were in my district like five hundred. That's, that's pit, painful.
And you had four people. There's four people that were running, right?
Three.
Three, okay.
Twenty five thousand. That's just horrible.
It is.
And. The sad part about it is back when there were less people living there. Sometimes we had more people vote, you know, uh when I ran, when Glenn Hill and I ran. At, we had twenty three, twenty four hundred people vote in that, in that district. And it's just. You know, the first time I ran, there were over eight hundred. And it was a whole, you know, half as big probably because the city only had ninety nine thousand people then. We weren't even over a hundred thousand. Less, the more, it seems like sometimes the more people you get, the less people you got that are involved and less it's a. Issue that's affecting them personally.
That's, yes, everybody wants to have an opinion online. And maybe that's what it is. Maybe the more people that are online, they think that someone's listening by osmosis.
That's possible.
I don't know. And but um it makes me so. Sad, I guess would be a right word. When I go in to vote in a local city election and I'm literally the first one there at noon. I'm like, are you kidding me right now? So we do, we do need to, we need to do better.
We need to do better and.
Local, not having newspapers and stuff probably hurt that process.
Went, that's probably a lot of it. There was the old Grand Prairie Daily News back then.
Yes.
That's a good point.
I would love to see this because I feel like I have visions where this podcast could go. I have visions for it. I think that you could have a news section of Faces of Grand Prairie. And then maybe it's not written. Maybe it's just keeping up with the video side. Maybe it's um, you know, having the areas where you could have maybe like political debate section. You could have a news section where it talks about. Summarizing the council meetings. They, they used to do that in local newspapers.
Yep.
You would summarize the things that you talked about. Now nobody's engaged with the process because nobody's reporting on it. And you know, Charles did a great job with that with like um the news at a glance when he was alive and he was doing. He was doing all those like, oh, these are all the planning and zoning things that are coming in. He got a lot of people to get engaged with that.
He did.
Um.
Good man.
It, very good man. He, like I had, I had him on. And it took a little cajoling, cause I was like, you are so fascinating to me. And he goes, there is nothing fascinating about me. I said, you are wrong. I said, you're a man in your sixties who has no clue how to use social media and you decided that you're gonna do this and it worked.
Yep.
I said, don't you think people wanna hear that? I said, what, what prompted you one day just to decide to do that? And he said, I just wanted to be more involved in my local government and local city. And so. It took, uh, he had to come on with Terry Brooks, cause they've been friends for forever, but, cause he just didn't think he was interesting enough on his own. And I'm like, whatever. But um it shows that there is a level of. Engagement, but that's one of the reasons I wanna bring young people on. I think if you can get young people involved. They give you an idea about how people wanna hear things that they're hearing. Nobody wants to pay for a subscription to a newspaper. But they'll listen to a YouTube channel.
Yeah.
Like we've been talking now for however long and I'm gonna timestamp it. People will listen to parts that they wanna listen to. And so I think that's where it needs to go, at least for right now.
Yeah, and I really like your idea that you're talking about getting the kids.
Yes.
Who have the biggest stake in the school district.
That's right. I told them, I said, why don't we get the presidents of the student councils? So if you are any of these people and you're listening, like. Um to do a panel for the people running for school board. They're the ones that are making decisions for your school. Why don't they get on and you could bring the questions that you wanna ask?
Yep, I thought that was a great idea.
I, I would love to do that. Um, you know, and, and one of the benefits of this building is being able to use that, there's, there's an area in there like a theater. You could set up a panel. And there's all kinds of ways that that could go. But I think that um. I don't necessarily wanna be the host of every single, you know, episode. There's a lot of ways to go about doing that. I think sending a reporter in, making that be something that's a project for a school board. Send, I mean, a, a student council. Send them into the meetings. Have them summarize it for us. And, and I think that that's what we're gonna have to do to get people engaged.
And Chris and I were talking about the, the theater needs to be used more. So that's great.
Hey, if you are out there and you wanna sponsor something like that, then it, it does cost to, to rent this. It's very cheap. Like this is twenty five dollars an hour. To get all this equipment, that is not bad. Um but I will start doing sponsorships and I think that those. I would love to see some kids get on here and start hosting. Be the, learn how to interview your elected officials. It's a good skill to know.
Absolutely.
Um, so that's kinda where I wanna go. So if you just keep that in mind. Um, so. But that's kinda where I'm going. And, and just the election process, I think what I did like in twenty twenty one was I gave everybody that was running for a spot. The, uh, the same exact set of questions. And I gave it to them ahead of time and I said. Whatever you're gonna say, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you any questions. I'm just gonna ask you that one question and you give me the answer to that one question. And then I gave each of them like ten minutes or fifteen minutes or whatever. Said everybody had the exact same opportunity. And uh it was just a little. Panel. And I said, I'm not gonna engage or, or respond. I'm just gonna give you the floor. And um at that year, people, cause we had, Junior was running that year. Nobody knew who Junior was, cause he was so young.
Yeah, he's, he was new.
And so that gives people the opportunity. There's no place for people to hear a candidate speak unless they come to your house or you go to a town hall.
Yeah, or the, the little deal that the chamber puts on.
Yes.
Which attracts. Attracts supporters.
It does.
Yeah.
It does.
It, it hardly attracts anybody that hadn't already got their mind made up.
That, exactly. So if you go out there and, and advertise with videos, it's going to help. So that's kinda where I'm, I'm headed. I just. I just feel passionate about that. And I think more people need to get engaged. Cause I'm telling you, when I saw some of those numbers, I was doing research about it the other day and I was like.
It's, it's, it's. Horrible.
When you think that one person that a hundred and fifty people voted for is making those kind of decisions for you. It's a little worrisome.
It is. And we're not the only city in that boat.
No, absolutely not.
You go next door to our suburb to the east.
Uh huh.
Uh they've got a couple of districts over there that. I don't know, they're fourteen and a million, so they got eighty thousand people in them. That may have uh twelve, fifteen hundred people vote too. It's. It's really sad. Then they, then of course, they've got other districts that are, that probably have. Fifteen thousand people vote.
That's true.
You know, it's.
They're more engaged.
Yep.
Well, hopefully we do something about that.
Yep, we just gotta engage them.
That's right.
And uh, you know. I'm not gonna do what the council people call town hall meetings. Where we bring in half of the city staff and they all speak about their one department.
Hmm.
Questions. I'm probably maybe do one or two of those throughout the three years. Maybe one on the east side and one on the west side. And the other opportunities I have will be more.
National night out.
Issue oriented.
Mm hmm.
Uh if there's something new coming and we'll. Focus it more there. I, I don't think that's a great use of city staff uh to bring them all out there just to talk about. If, if a, if an area has some issues, we'll address those issues. And maybe just do an overview of everything else. Uh, we had, we had an issue uh of a new, of a big zoning case.